Everybody's doing good on this Friday, the 13th. Hopefully, we don't have any presentations that are too scary today. But all right, well, this is day four. I appreciate everybody's hard work and good questions the last few days. So why don't we get things fired up? We've got eight presentations today, first one being the Health Department.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll ask Dr. Cho to come on up to the table. And while he's coming, I've got Toni Merrill next to me. You haven't seen her all week, but she's got five of them today. So she'll be next to me a lot. So welcome to Toni, and she has the Health Department. Also, I want to call out Jorge Navarette, doing a great job putting the budget together over at the Health Department, and Melissa Van Burgen. There we go, all right. So you need the clicker. I'll get you the clicker. I'll do that in just a moment. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Toni.
Okay. Morning, Dr. Cho. How you doing?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. And I'm going to actually start. We're going to talk the numbers before I turn the meeting over to Dr. Cho. Thank you for having me today to present Dr. Cho's, the Health Department's, budget. We're going to go ahead and we are going to start on page one with the department's purpose. If you want to read that, I'm sure you've all read that. The current tax rate was approved by the board and is the same this current year as it was in fiscal '26. On page one, you'll go ahead and you'll see a breakdown of the fiscal year '26 budget request, along with the last three years' actuals and the '25 approved budget. This table is also repeated on page two. The Health Department has its own fund and does not utilize the general fund. If you go ahead and you turn to page two, we'll talk about some of the budget drivers that are responsible for the creation of the Health Department's request. Number one, with the high-end condos that are being built in downtown St. Petersburg, the current location of the Health Department, which is their clinical site, is no longer situated to serve their clientele. We did talk briefly about this last year, but we have a little bit more information on some progress that we've made into looking at into this this year. Dr. Cho will be going into more of that later on in his presentation, but I did want to bring it to your attention. In the middle of page two, you're going to see that the fiscal '26 budget excluding reserves reflects an increase of $117,760, which is less than 1% of an increase from the '25 adopted budget of $12.6 million. Revenues for the Health Department are supported by the collection of ad valorem revenues, access fees from the tax collector, and interest earnings. The revenues from the ad valorem are expected to decrease by approximately $452,000 or 4.9% from the budget of fiscal '25. Interest earnings are projected to increase $247,000, and the tax collector is expected to increase about $500. These increases are based off year-to-dates for fiscal '25. The reserves for the Health Department Fund maintains total reserves of $4.1 million for fiscal '26, which is an increase of 5.5% of the '25 adopted budget. This increase is due to increases in the budgeted ad valorem revenues, increases in the estimated interest earnings, and decreases in expenditures from the roof replacement project from fiscal year '25. There are no county FTEs associated with the Health Department, but they do utilize funding received from the county to help offset some of their staffing wages. If you go ahead and turn to page three, you'll see that the operating expenses excluding reserves are decreasing by approximately $97,000 to $8.5 million. Including reserves, there is an increase of $117,000 to $12.6 million. There are no proposed changes to user fees for fiscal '26, and there are also no proposed CIP projects. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Cho, who will discuss the Health Department's accomplishments, along with his PowerPoint presentation for you. Thank you.
I will. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Toni. I appreciate it. And again, thank you for your continued support of public health here in Pinellas County to the Board of County Commission. I would like to start off with the mission statement, something that I wholeheartedly subscribe to. Our mission statement at the Florida Department of Health is to protect the community, to promote good health and good choices, and to improve the health of our residents and visitors. And we do that by looking at some of the gaps. We look at working with community partners, and ultimately, we continue to work with community partners to look at areas that need improvement. So, public health in Florida dictated by Florida State Statute, Chapter 154, the legislature recognized a unique partnership which necessarily exists between the state and counties. In the meeting, the public health needs were contractual arrangement between the state, as well as each county. And this is what we called here, the core contract. In fact, if you even look at my position, I'm appointed by the Board of County Commission, but it does require consensus in concurrence by the Board of County Commission as well. So looking at some of our top priorities, we go through a community health assessment, health improvement plan every five years. We look at some of the datas. We survey our residents. And then we gather community partners to go over sort of our top health priorities. Our last cycle does show that our top priorities includes mental health, substance use disorder, access to care and social services, and health promotion and behaviors. And to that end, we do follow up and again, work with community partners through what we call our community action teams, develop those goals and objectives to tackle on these top health priorities. Ultimately, when you're tackling these larger public health issues, we realize that we're just one state agency. We really need a whole community approaching, a whole community effort to address that. Some highlights of this current fiscal year, the number, I'm probably one of the numbers I'm most proud of, includes that we provide over 1.1 million services to our residents and visitors annually. We also have the highest number of sexually transmitted infection treatments that were provided among all the 67 local health departments in the state of Florida. That's been the case for the last two years. And it speaks a lot in terms of testing, in terms of prevention. Ultimately, if these services weren't there, we could see higher rates of STDs. So we're fortunate to have a robust clinical line that addresses those STDs, whether it's HIV, whether it's anything communicable disease-related. Focusing on one of our top health priorities in terms of substance use disorders, we are pretty involved through our opioid overdose prevention efforts. We continue to facilitate the Pinellas County Opioid Task Force, something that was started here around 2017. Through our Health Department clinics, we've distributed over 2,700 naloxone kits. That's the reversal to opioid overdose. Myself and our leadership participate in the opioid abatement advisory, along with Commissioner Peters. We serve on that board. We're in the middle of an RFP process, and we're hopeful that we can plug in some of those gaps within our system of care as it pertains to substance use disorder. Additionally, we started medication-assisted therapy. That's things like methadone and buprenorphine within our healthcare for the homeless program related as a treatment for substance use disorder. And we continue to support Perk with their syringe exchange program. So other highlights, public health preparedness. This is something we're pretty involved in. A lot of people may not know, but DOH staff are required to staff the special needs shelters, either shelters that take care of our most vulnerable in our community during activations, those that are oxygen-dependent, those that are electrically-dependent. And it was a busy season, last hurricane season with Helene and Milton. And between the two of them, we had over 1,300 clients in our special needs shelters. And that doesn't even include all the caregivers. So it was a pretty packed special needs shelters and operations at that time. I can tell you, when we have those statewide calls, we go down each of the counties about numbers and how each of our clinics are doing. And I can say consistently, especially if a hurricane comes closer to us, that we have the highest number of special needs clients. And I suspect, and I'll defer to our colleagues, general shelters as well, just given our geography, given our population, our activations, it takes a lot of effort and it takes certainly a community response to that and partnership response. It was so large, we actually, following Milton, we had the largest step-down shelter in the Coliseum. We've never had that before for prolonged periods of time with nearly 300 clients that we can, because of all the homes and damages and all that.
Remember, these are people that need power, and power was out for an extended period of time. So that really changed the step-down shelter configuration.
The glimmer, something that positive always comes to me during times of activation, times of crisis, we get to see the community come together. It's a beautiful thing to watch. Sometimes we have these disagreements, but when there is an emergency, if there's a crisis, the EMS, the law enforcement, human services, it's a thing to watch at the EOC, as well as on the field. So one of our areas that we invest in is school health nursing. We contribute 40 LPNs, but more, we've converted that recently to more service deliveries, but they also assist in our special needs shelters as well as part of the agreement. And with the advantage of having school health nurses is that they are the boots on the ground. They address acute medical issues, acute mental health crises. They manage chronic diseases that our students may, in terms of medications. We've increased referrals. Again, they're the eyes and ears, boots on the ground. So if someone needs a mental health or social services, they do those referrals. And you can see our referral numbers have increased this past school year at over 5,800. They also assist with state-mandated physical screenings such as vision, hearing, scoliosis, and gross development. And you can see we're meeting those targets. And then, one of the biggest factors for student success is that return to class rates. And you can see that we've improved that as well, at 88% in the contracted schools. Another area that we invest in is also dental sealants, is that preventative coating to brand cavities. We were able to, this school year, go to 53 Title I elementary schools. I think there's 55. We couldn't get to two of them due to scheduling, spacing issues, but pretty much almost all the Title I elementary schools here in the county. You can see here that we've screened and gave instructions to over 8,600 children. Over 3,500 children received sealants, and 14,000 teeth were sealed. So moving on to our numbers, this is our budget overall. You can see the sources of revenue, including local grants and contracts. That includes both the county indigenous healthcare, as well as the dollars from Juvenile Welfare Board, Healthy Star Coalition, among other local grants. DOH state, DOH federal, you can see in the orange and the yellow. The core contract that we're discussing here is at 12% of our overall budget, along with fees and other sources. And focusing the core contract for this current fiscal year, you can see sort of the breakdown on the usage in terms of clinical services. 22% does go to school health nursing, 6% to dental, disease controls, that includes things like epidemiology, outbreak investigations, building improvements, admin, and environmental public health at 7%. And ultimately, what this does and enables to do is to enhance our public health service lines, whether it is communicable disease, whether it is those clinical treatments such as the STD treatments.
Dr. Cho?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggers.
Just from the little historical perspective, if you could, on the nursing program, like when our board took some action a few years ago, just how that's going, and just maybe a little comment about the partnership.
Sure. So we continue to work with the school health district. Keeping in mind, just to give a little background, they do receive funds from the state level that's channeled through DOH Schedule Cs. They get federal dollars that's channeled through DOE. They use their own general revenue. But what we found at the time, a few years ago, was it remained a gap. Ultimately, initially, our goal was to get that nurse in every school, and we did achieve that during that pandemic timeframe. Some of the challenges that has arisen has been that nursing shortages and the recruitments, but we do continue to work with the school district to try to ensure that access is still there. And what they say, and what they're seeing on the field during the schools, is that the needs are starting to continue to grow, whether it's increasing chronic diseases, increasing mental health crises, and stuff like that, which is somewhat indicative of those increased referral rates, I think we're seeing. But it's been a good partnership, and we continue to work with the school district. Yes, sir.
Just, again, I may have missed it. I was trying to listen to you there. Did we, we're not achieving a nurse in every school now?
No, no. And again, a lot of--
Are there vacancies, or we're just decided strategically not to do it?
It's a combination, just because they need to have that kind of coverage. But for the last three years, I believe, following the pandemic, there's been a nursing shortage of recruitment. I think that's maybe even reflected at the industry level. But, so, we're going to continue and work with the school district to achieve to that goal, but also, in the meantime, pivot in such a way that we have some sort of coverage in the schools.
So do they still need the funds that we've provided through that, to that millage adjustment, or is that something that we need to revisit?
Something we can always discuss, but without that additional funds, I think the shortage would even be more so. So looking at the upcoming fiscal year, I think Toni sort of covered it, a little over $8 million. You can see the sort of the breakdown in the usage. The millage is at .07. I think the max is at .5, is .5. You see the sort of the breakdown on planned utilization, with close to $6 million being at public health services, $2 million for the school health nurses, as we discussed, and then the health fund reserve. And it did, and to that end, we understand that number does look big, something we discussed here last year, and maybe even the prior year. One of our goals is to eventually relocate from our St. Petersburg site. We've been working with the county and one of the partners in CBRE, one of the vendors, in the process of doing a space needs assessment. I think we finalized the scope of work and waiting for final approval. And ultimately, once that plan is completed and something is in place, our goal in discussions with Barry is maybe moving some of that to capital reserves as well.
Commissioners, the Health Department operates a little bit different, because they take care of their own maintenance. And so they carry that reserve to be able to fund roof repairs and things like that. So they don't come back to our capital. Depending upon the outcome of this, we will have to look at how they would propose to go into a new facility, and of course, selling the current land, which, and its location, would be, you know, we believe would be quite valuable. So that's part of the discussions. They've got to get through kind of a preliminary scope, because he wants to move the location, obviously, for their south to his clients, but not necessarily all the administration. So those are some of the discussions that they're working through with CBRE to try to put a box around this. What does it look like? What's the value? Get all the economics, so we can have a better discussion.
And I think Toni's covered some of this, but just our large, more occurring capital projects includes things like AC repairs within our Clearwater site. We mentioned this, I think, last year as well, roof repair, which we've already done some of the phase work on that, but it does total at $2.5 million. But given that, the time it's going to take to, number one, find appropriate property in St. Petersburg, that it's probably going to be well over five years. So moving forward with those continued roof repairs, as it serves as our administration, our busiest clinical site, and as well as our Health Department Command Center during hurricane activations.
And depending upon the outcome of the proposal, this may be a new penny issue, again, because it's county-wide, would come off the top before we do the distribution.
So in terms of the space assessment, I mentioned we were working with CBRE. That's estimated to be $115,000, so hopefully, we'll complete that by this upcoming fiscal year. And then some other mid-county engineering projects at $900,000, things like moisture intrusion, slab adjustment, and conference rooms. So again, this is just a summary of sort of our bigger capital projects that we're going to be focusing on next year. I think that is everything that I had. I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for Dr. Cho?
So this is our property, the DOH, is our property that where all these improvements are funded through the reserves, or they're funded from the state? Or what, how's that? Go ahead.
A combination, but ultimately, unlike the other county--
We'd have to get a state appropriation for it. So this is a good year to do that, but we really don't know what we're looking at yet. And so, yes, we want to receive state funds, but it'll probably be a combination. Yes, it's currently our property, isn't it?
Right, right.
And so, you know, then, you know, we'd have to, all those things would go into it. But that's also the reason they've been building up reserves, not only for the roof repair, but maybe something to go towards the design and building out a change in that location. But we're going to get, you know, an appraisal of the current property, of what that looks like, and put everything together before we have a discussion. But I really believe it is, and to Dr. Cho's point, it's a new penny issue, you know? And that way, it comes off the top. So--
What we can in terms of the bigger renovations, repairs, that's all through at least our DOH coffers as well.
Just last question. What does moisture intrusion mean, other than, you know, problems?
Is it the ground, the slab? Well, I think there's the water intrusion, I think it was on the, close to the foundation on the slabs, or something that, on the first floor, something that we're, need to repair.
Okay, all right.
Which is also, Commissioner, while you will see, the first floor repairs that need to be done was because of the flooding due to the intrusion and the roof leaking.
Any other questions? Cummins? All right. Thanks, Dr. Cho. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the medical examiner.
So Dr. Thogmarten is coming to the table. I see Rita is not with him today, so, that's right, she's traveling. We talked about that. And Toni's going to stay next to me, and Toni's going to get into the medical examiner's budget as well. And by the way, in prior years, we have had the Health Department and the medical examiner present on their own. This year, we made a slight change, and we're going to have the analyst start and then head over that way.
All right. Morning, Dr. Thogmarten.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So now, we're going to go ahead and just move right on to Dr. Thogmarten and the medical examiners. If you'll go ahead and turn to page one for the department's purpose, the medical examiner's office does provide both forensic medicine services and forensic laboratory services. On page one, you'll see the table of the breakdown for the '26 budget request, along with the last three years' actual, and the fiscal '25 approved budget. The medical examiner's budget is 100% general fund, and there is a total requested increase of 5.3%, which is equivalent to $480,000 in fiscal '26. On page two of your documents, we'll go over the budget drivers that build up this increase. Personnel services are increasing by approximately $50,000 from fiscal '25, and this increase is largely due to a third DNA analyst that came in just maybe a month ago, but will be fully embedded in fiscal '26. This was a decision package, and the position was recently hired--
It was a decision package from 2025.
Correct. Correct. It was mainly due to the rapid DNA program for arrestees that are used by the sheriff's department. Right now, the FTE stays flat at three, three full-time employees. Operating expenses are increasing $429,000, which includes an increase to Dr. Thogmarten's professional service fee contract of $522,000. This increase is reflective of his personnel's cost increasing, and less revenue being collected from outside services due to less services that are being needed. He's going to go over some of that in his portion. There are 14 user fees that are paid by non-county jurisdictions for the ME. These are expected to increase, and he's asking for increases on these. If those increases are approved, this helps to reduce his professional services contract with us. The inter-local agreement that the county has with Pasco County's use of the medical examiner facility is set to expire in fiscal '25, but we've already implemented, and it's currently going through grant, a one-year renewal. We are allowed two one-year renewals on that contract. Another ongoing inter-local agreement with the county is with Manatee Sheriff, County Sheriff's Office, to continue performing DNA analysis. Has an annual gross income agreement, will increase to $262,000 from fiscal '26. The county also receives 20% of this revenue directly from Manatee. Governmental CIP projects were presented at the June 11 governmental CIP Budget Information Session. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Thogmarten for his presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. 25th year? 25th time, I guess? So, yes, I'm John Thog Martin. I'm the medical examiner for the district, the circuit. Now, mostly, I'm going to be, my PowerPoint's not long at all. The main thing, you know, the fentanyl stuff, you know, that was killing us? I mean, hundreds of thousands of people, and then us. It was just, it was brutal. Every day, three, four, five, six fentanyl deaths. Those haven't completely dried up, but they have substantially dried up. Seems like methamphetamine's still doing its thing, but, you know, I'll confess, methamphetamine is a safer drug than fentanyl, you know, to make you crazy, but generally, it'll kill you less. Sounds weird. Anyway...
That's the medical examiner.
Yeah. Basically, the opioid fentanyl thing peaked about 2022, 2023, and now, it's going down. This is great. So, it's reduced the autopsy load. So, I had a physician hired, I think, 2022. He left because his wife's a physician. She got a job with the Mayo Clinic. I kind of paused, replacing him, and ended up where the budget you're seeing, that's gone. So, just, you know, we have the agility to just do that. So, no, now we're down one physician, but, you know, it's fine. It's fine.
Dr. Thog Martin, is, what's the reason for the drop? Is it because of the naloxone distribution?
It could be that. It could be the opioid task force doing their thing. Could be law enforcement. Could be it's not flowing over the border as much. But it really has gone down. It's the same thing like, remember the pill mill crisis?
Yeah.
What, '08 to maybe '11? It was brutal. And, but fentanyl's much, I mean, you know, if you look at the, we had a massive increase in workload from that. And it's just people taking oxycodone, oxycontin and stuff, usually in combination with Xanax or Alprazolam. And when you guys and other municipalities clamp down on the pill mill stuff, you know, it went away. Poof, it's gone. And then fentanyl replaced it. And then that made the pill mill crisis look like nothing. And then now, clamp down, probably multifactorial. And then, we're seeing a relief. It's great. So, I know, I, I don't really get into the why. I just tell you what's happening. And it's incredible. I mean, I think we're down, gosh, probably three-quarters of them are gone, which is really great. I mean, I don't get to deliver good news to many people, but it's so nice to say something, you know, nice.
Commissioner Peters?
So...
I have a question for you too, and you, I don't know if you'll have the answer for it, but I did speak to Rita about if, in fact, it's the border. Are we seeing anything new? And I had heard from law enforcement that we saw an uptick in methamphetamine, like you said. But she said that they found, you all have found, that whoever is mixing this on the street found some ground plastic that is in a powder form, and that some of the tests have come through with heavy doses of plastic. And that, so maybe you don't know about that. And if Rita were here, she'd probably give us a whole rant on it. But as people start mixing things on the street, if they're not getting the fentanyl, they're trying to find something else. And what we have found on the streets in Pinellas County is finely ground plastic. Now, naloxone's not going to work on plastic, and plastic is going to, is clearly causing some deaths, so, or cases in which they're investigating. So, it's always something. It's always, you know, they're always, the people on the street are always one step ahead of us, but, so I'll have to get more information from Rita then. Thank you.
I mean, nature abhors a vacuum. So, people want their brain candy. They'll figure out something, you know. Cost, you know, there's really, the best way I've found to, for you guys to be assured that you're getting, you know, a good, because 406 is funny. You're not a consumer of medical examiner work product, per se. You know, like the state attorney, like the sheriff's office is, public defender, you know, they're direct, they directly consume it. So, they're really concerned with the professional competency, the scientific competency of the ME. Since you guys aren't, you know, really, I'm not sending you autopsy reports, and you're not looking at those. You're worried about, you know, fiscal competency, financial competency. Because 406, the law that gives, you know, you guys have to have an ME. You have to have one. And the only obligation to county government is you have to pay for it. It's an unfunded mandate from the state. So, are you getting, you know, a good deal per unit work? So, I just, I have every ME office up there except for Districts 10 and Districts 20. I couldn't get good, you know, overall budget numbers on them. But I think we'd fare very favorable. We're in the green there. That's, take the total amount of money that, you know, Pinellas and Pasco provides, divide it by the total number of medical examiner cases accepted. I think we're in good shape compared to others. Here it is, if you take the total number of, you know, total amount of money, divide it by autopsies, again, that's pretty darn good. And if you look at those, a lot of those offices that are on our level are even close to us, aren't accredited. And so, we're a higher performing office. And then, per violent deaths, my buddy, Dr. Fulcher in Volusia, does a little bit better on that, but he's a good guy. I'll give him a break. But for a cost per unit work, you are getting one of the best deals in the state as far as your tax dollars being spent appropriately. And then, the laboratory, I mean, you know, I wish Rita was here. She always likes to, I always tease her, you know, she won some award again. And I joke with her all the time. This is a ward that talks about efficiency. Turnaround time and cost per unit work for forensic labs. And she, her lab is just crazy good. I mean, really, really good. And it's the only lab in the state that is basically under the purview of the medical examiner. All the other labs are usually under sheriff's office. So, these people work, you know, in that same contract that I have with y'all, that's part of this. Always efficient. Look at the cost per case. I mean, if you're talking about, you know, you, per, cost per unit work, no comparison. The only thing, I mean, I look at blood alcohol, that's a real simple test. It's very, very simple. That's the only one where we're slightly above the 25th percentile. But look at DNA. Look at the cost of DNA. Unbelievably low. And that's like, I mean, I always say DNA, having your own DNA labs like having, you know, your local superhero, because it's just incredible crime solving. And then you talk about turnaround time. Look at the turnaround time. Again, you know, we're at 25th percentile on blood alcohol, which means we're, you know, really quick at the 25th percentile. We're really, you know, you get the test in, it spits out, and we're one of the fastest. DNA, look at that. Turnaround time. 27 days. Unprecedented for a publicly funded lab. FDLE, they're months and months. The mean is 141 days. Pretty much every one of those, that's all the forensic lab, just, you know, getting those samples in, getting them out. So, if you, this is, I'll be Rita. I'm going to play my Rita. I'm going to do my impersonation of Rita. If you're a law enforcement agency, and you have a crime, and you submit DNA, and it's going to take six months to get it back, that's not an investigative tool. That's a prosecution tool. That's confirming the guy you arrested or may, you know, actually did it. And sometimes you get surprised. But if you can get it back within a couple of weeks, you now have an investigative tool. You're getting the bad guy, you may not even be able to identify the bad guy, but you're getting them off the street six months earlier? How, what's the monetary value of that? It's, I think it's priceless. So, looking for the future, you know, we're always sharpening the sword, always looking for ways of being more efficient. We're always, you know, Rita's getting grants like crazy. We are too. But really, Rita, I mean, the, they don't give many medical examiner grants. I guess we're not cool enough. But DNA always gets just tons of money. All your capital expenditures, if you have operating supplies in your county budget outside the contract, that's just all grants. It's all grants. If you, capital equipment is almost always grants. Even the 12,500 this year in the budget is a carryover that we didn't spend from a grant that you received last year. Two things. There's been some talk with Manatee County, you know, have a, they have a five-year contract with us to do all their DNA stuff. There's kind of a talk about maybe doing a regional forensic lab. And that's just because, you know, what I say, nature abhors, abhors a vacuum. If, if you're Pasco County, and you send it, your stuff to the state lab, it's months and months. If you pay money to send it to us, it's less than a month. So, there's talks about them doing what Manatee County did. Manatee County lost their patients, and with FDLE, they just sent it to us, all of it. So, it talks about maybe doing a regional laboratory, particularly with DNA. That's really where we need it. And then, I got to work with Mr. Rose. We're going to try to simplify the ME budget. I've got probably five or six years left before I retire, I'd say. I got about, maybe five, yeah, five or six years, I'm going to retire. I have to, we have to somehow, there's a couple of, there's money being moved that's just a wash. So, we need to try to make the budget a little simpler, because if I show this to my colleagues, there's only people that, that have five years' experience and have my accreditation and degree credentialing, there's only about maybe 400 in the United States. And out of those, probably only 200 maybe want to be chief, maybe. Or they are chief, or have the capability of being it. Out of those who aren't stuck on their jobs and have family, elderly parents, whatever, we're talking about maybe 60 people in the country that would be willing to take my place. So, when I'm explaining the budget to them, I don't want them to get the thousand, you know, thousand-yard stare of fear. So, we got to try to simplify this down a little bit for them. Because every year, I'm having to re-educate myself about, you know, all the monetary movements that I think we don't have to do, because it's a wash. It's just a big circle. A lot of it's just a big circle, from you, to them, then me, and it's unnecessary administrative stuff. That's about it.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Wiki?
Thank you, Doctor. It seems like you kind of hacked the good, fast, and cheap model. You know, usually, you can only get two out of the three, but it seems like we're getting good, fast, and cheap. So, just appreciate, you know, your hard work and dedication on this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one quick question. If I, if I follow this correctly, your budget includes wage increases for your staff for '26?
We have a two-year, two-step decision package.
Okay.
That was for FY '25 and FY '26. I found out, because I kept hemorrhaging people, that we weren't paying enough. We were like, particularly the lab people. That's the crazy one. So, you guys approved a two-step increase.
I remember the discussion.
Yeah. And then, there's, that's outside of the usual payroll thing. So, my salaries have increased partly because of that decision package, and partially because of just, you know, whatever you guys are doing, the 3% increase, you know, for your people. I don't know what you're doing.
But is, so the question, so Commissioner, you're correct. Last year, again, Rita came and, and she's very cognizant of costs, so she gave us a phased-in approach to get her to competitiveness. So, this is the second year of that phase in. What I, I need Chris to answer is whether any, any additional normal salary increases have been built in or not.
No. The county supports...
Okay. So, whatever we gave, we would add, we would add that.
The three FTEs, and that's common with all.
Okay. So, it would be, it would be in addition if we give a salary increase, and that it would be, we would increase their budget accordingly.
Dr. Thog Martin's personnel are included in his professional service contract, and that's that one-line item.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, so, so I heard you say, again, five years to get somebody, one of 60 people that might replace you.
How do we go about doing that? I mean, you know...
There's a, it's described in Florida Administrative Code. There's a process. Really, it's not your problem particularly. It's really not. It's more of a circuit problem. I have some experience in the area. It would be, you know, the state attorney, Bruce Bartlett, would be, you know, chairing a search committee, and you guys would be, one, you would have a representative on it. It's all described in Administrative Code. The main thing is, is I've dealt with my colleagues. They're a squirrely bunch. They're just squirrely. I mean, so, if I'm explaining a very complex budget to them, they're just like, are you kidding me? You know, so, we got to make it a little bit more clear, I think. And I think we can chew around the edges and make that pie a little bit smaller, you know, a little bit easier, without affecting the overall thing. Every, it's funny, 25 years, I started out with, you know, so many workbook spreadsheets, right? And then every time there's an OMB change, not you, Chris, I'm sure, but every time there was an OMB change, they added another spreadsheet. Then there's another spreadsheet. Then there's another spreadsheet. So now, I've got, I don't know, when I do my budget, I've got like, I don't know, six or seven different spreadsheets that are all formulated out. I show that to somebody, they're going to just flip. So, maybe we shrink that a little bit.
So, when we're out recruiting, the reputation that you've created here will be of assistance?
Yes, I think so. I think so. You'd, you'd want somebody that, I'm the largest non-public medical examiner employer in the state. So, you'd want somebody, I want to be a big shot, you know, I guess. I don't know. That's what you're looking for. Somebody that wants a challenge. Me, I'm already looking at some of the younger folks, you know, seeing, because I work with some of them occasionally, trying to find talent. And there's a couple of people I think could do it. I think so. There's probably a couple of people in my office that can do it. Just, they are like, eh, I don't know if I want to do that, you know? But there are people that are capable. You just have to talk them into it. And you don't want them to talk themselves out of it when they see the budget stuff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Thog Martin. Appreciate everything you do. All right. Next, we have Human Services.
So, Karen Yachim and Carrie Visandu are on their way to the table. Tony's going to stay next to me here. This is also her department. So, she will be presenting, and we're back to a county admin department format where it's definitely over here and then over there. So, we'll give them just a minute to get settled. And Tony, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're going to go ahead and jump right into the department purpose on page one of your document. Human Services has the following funds. They utilize the general fund, the Drug Abuse Trust Fund, the Opioid Abatement Settlement Fund, and the HDPP Local Provider Participation Fund. You will see the actuals on these tables from '22 through '24, along with the budgeted totals of 25 on pages one and two of your documents. And we'll go ahead and talk about more of those numbers in a few minutes. If you go ahead and turn to page three, we'll discuss some of the efficiencies and cost-saving measures that the department has taken over the last couple of years. In fiscal '26, fiscal year '26, Human Services is proposing cost reductions of 346,000 by taking the following actions. The termination of the SOAR, that's SOAR, it's the SSI, SSDI Outreach Access and Recovery Program, a reduction in pharmacy allocations, and Care Connect funding. For fiscal year '25, the department was able to utilize cost reductions of 309,000 by eliminating some technology that was related to the health program ID cards. There was a reduction in the Healthcare Responsibility Act, and utilizing in-house expertise versus contracting out for services. Down at the bottom of page three, you'll see the budget drivers, and we're going to go ahead and break those out by each individual fund, starting with the general fund. The general fund is increasing by 1.3 million, which is approximately 2% to 67.1 million. Their personnel is decreasing 670, 267, sorry, thousand dollars. This is mainly due to several... Their personnel is decreasing $670, $267,000. This is mainly due to several long-term employees that have retired. The department has been able to fill those positions at a lower starting wage. The department was also able to justify the reduction of two FTE positions that have been vacant. The General Fund FTE count decreases to 97, and their operating expenses are increasing $1.7 million. This is due to some new grants within the homeless prevention and professional services that are state-mandated, as in the Medicaid match. Our next fund that we'll discuss is the Drug Abuse Trust Fund. The Drug Abuse Trust Fund provides financial assistance via grants with, for qualified drug abuse treatments and education programs. The grants and AIDS funding is consistent with previous years at $35,000. Their reserves are increasing $12,000 to $21,000 for fiscal '26. Your next fund is the Opioid Abatement Settlement Fund. The Opioid Abatement Settlement Fund operating is increasing by $11.8 million, and this is due to increases in professional services. Revenue is increasing by $11.7 million, and this increases a combination of fund balance, interest, and revenue from the regional and the city-county settlements. Personnel services are increasing $4,000, mainly due to the FRS increases. The FTE count does remain flat at three. The HDPP Local Provider Participation Fund, there are no changes that are presented in the fiscal '26 budget for this fund, as the data comes from the state, and it normally is not even received until sometime in June. It's important to know, though, that this fund is strictly a pass-through fund. In the middle of page four, you're gonna see that the department submitted two decision packages for fiscal '26. The first decision package is a $4,000 reoccurring increase to the Neighborly Cares Meal Program, and that's due to a 15% increase on the individual meals that are served. The county administrator has preliminarily approved this request. Second decision package is a $205,000, yes?
Question, maybe, for you guys. On the Neighborly Cares program, is that the Meals on Wheels program? And, you know, it's been part of the discussion that we've heard about as far as a reduction in those, I guess, either federal dollars or wherever they're coming from. Have we seen that start to materialize? And what, how much of our program is at risk, if any?
Our program is just General Fund, so I know Area Agency on Aging has discussed some federal cuts. So, we are a gap filler to the Neighborly program. So, if we're able to keep this funding consistent, the number of meals that the county provides for that program will remain static.
What are we hearing about the, the other piece, the piece from ARP?
We haven't heard from Neighborly on any impacts directly to them. I know Commissioner Flowers has spoken before about potential impacts to Area Agency on Aging, so I don't know what it means for the entire Meals on Wheels program.
All right. Well, obviously, some of our most vulnerable, whatever, you know, whatever category you wanna put folks in. I mean, certainly our vets and others that are, you know, mostly at home, and this is the only type they get. So I just wanna make sure we have a good handle on that, so we understand the impact to folks that desperately need the help. So, I don't know where, what we're hearing, so.
Mr. Chair, if, if you don't mind, I reported on this briefly when I was giving the last update for Commissioner Reports, and it is a grievous situation. We, we will be looking at having to lay off staff. We will not be able to service clients that we currently are servicing, as well as those on the waitlist. I will say that Congressman Bill Arakus has been real supportive in, you know, submitting letters and speaking on our behalf. But we, it's a dire situation. We won't be able to provide funding for persons to continue to receive meals in their homes. Some, we will have to cut down, I did report this number. Some, instead of the five days a week and then we leave meals for the weekend, it will be cut down to three days. So, it's a, it is a dire situation, sorry.
And the funding for that program, just so I understand, is it, you know, in the pie that, and that's not a pun intended, but at all, but the pie that we have for it, is it federally funded primarily, or locally funded, or like, when I say locally, through?
Our allocation is General Fund. So, this, this amount is strictly General Fund. This was a historical decision package that came through many years ago, and it became a recurring part of our budget based on continued need in that area.
But they have other funding.
They have other funding.
They have other grant funding.
That's what I'm trying to get a feel for.
So, we're, we're just a piece of their overall budget. And, but Commissioners, just going into this budget, we knew this was gonna be an issue. You're seeing a lot of state and federal grant cuts, but you also saw the bottom line of our budget. So, the direction I gave to the departments is if you lose a grant, so goes the cost of that, because we have millions of dollars in grants out there. I mean, probably hundreds of millions of dollars in grants, and so there's just no way to absorb that within the existing budget, you know, so it can't put it on our side. So, it's gonna be a tough issue. There is gonna be specific areas that impact people significantly. So, I just, you know.
And again, I just don't, I just wanna make sure we understand
Right.
the picture of who's being impacted and how, that's all. And, I mean, it's not just numbers on a, on a sheet of paper.
You're 100% correct. And she can, you can probably provide that in terms of how their overall funding.
And maybe it's an evolving thing that we'll understand more and more. But, I just think it's something that we need to be aware of, you know. Rubber meets the road is right here in our county.
Oh, it is.
To our people. So I just wanna make sure we're clear.
These are residents, and there's gonna be an impact. There's no question.
Thank you.
I'm happy to, we do have our meeting next week, so I'll be happy to share any update that we have. But as of this morning, our funding sources still are cut extremely, or extremely cut. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the second decision package. That decision package is a $205,000 non-reoccurring request to close the funding gap for the Sexual Assault Services Program. This is largely due to an increase in standby pays. At the time of this submission, the county administrator did not recommend this decision package, and the department has been working to find alternatives. I'm sure Karen will talk more about that.
Sure. So, this, this program is provided through Suncos Center, and it is a combination of state funding, federal funding. JWB is also a funded partner, as well as the county. So, our funding has remained static around $180,000 for many years. I met with the CEO this year. There was a competitive issue with nursing. So, as Dr. Cho mentioned, keeping forensically-trained nurses on staff, being able to respond within a one-hour timeframe for residents or visitors who have been sexually assaulted, was creating a significant issue. And so, what they were being paid was, I think, $3.33 an hour for standby pay. And what was occurring regionally was that increased to around $33 per hour. And so, Suncos had to go to market and raise those salaries, which created a deficit of around $205,000. When I met with the CEO, I talked about what other strategies have you gone after to, cuz it can't just be your coming to the county. We're not just the easy ask. And so, he went back to JWB, and they did agree to increase their funding, so the decision package can be decreased to about $160,000, because they are serving residents 13-plus, which really kinda falls into that, you know, JWB bucket.
So if we didn't recommend that, I mean, what would that increase the wait times to?
It would substantially increase the wait time. So, the credentialing is one hour. So, they're really looking for best practice. So, it could go to five hours, 10 hours, or our residents may need to be transported out of county for that exam.
But Commissioner, what she just said, this is new information for me. So, I'm hearing it real time. The, that's what we really wanted. We wanted everybody to step up. We were one piece of the, of the puzzle, but too often, they have a hard time getting money out of the state, or out of Suncos, or out of JWB. So, it's easy just to lobby and come here. So, if it was us being, paying our proportionate share, that's a much easier thing to recommend to you. But, we get that a lot, and so that's the reason I push back. So, we'll reconsider it based upon this new information.
And I just got that new figure Monday, so that's, it's very fast.
You're okay.
Yeah.
Quick question. What's, what's the time limit after a sexual assault that you have to get the examination done? Is there, you have to do within a certain period of time?
Best practice is one hour.
Best practice is one hour.
That's what the, the credentialing kind of board that oversees this type of work says that best practice is within one hour. You have a specially-trained nurse going to the hospitals, meeting with that victim or survivor to go through that exam.
Okay. I mean, what happens if it's 24 hours later? I mean, would?
No good.
It's no good?
The service is needed. The real question is how you, how you're sharing the cost.
And I think the longer you wait, the longer the resident may change their mind that they're not gonna go through with the exam. So, I mean, and it's, I think if you look kind of like to what Commissioner Eggers was saying about the people, it's a traumatic event. You're sitting in the hospital, you're waiting, you may just leave. You may not wanna go through with it. So, I think that the quicker we can respond to that situation, the better, which is why I put that through, knowing kinda where we are this year.
Thank you. Go ahead, and you can move on to the bottom of page four. There is a table that's for the user fees. There we are. And the department is requesting an increase in three user fees through their Consumer Protections Agency. This is basically adjusting the fees to the actual costs. You can also go ahead and see more detail on page 31 of your documents, and it's attachment number seven. Currently, there are no CIP projects for Human Services. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the meeting over to Karen, who can talk more about some accomplishments, work plans, performance measures, and topics of discussion.
Sure. And if it's okay, I'm gonna start with topics for discussion, kind of back to that budget driver section. So, I included two areas to be discussed today. So, the first is the Care About Me program. So, as many of you may know, we implemented the Care About Me, the Coordinated Access Model, in May of last year. So, we have just hit our one year of this pilot. We are seeing some tremendous work being done with our residents. And as a reminder, the goal of this was to make getting, make access easier for our residents. That was goal number one. So, streamlining access, making it fast, making it easy, having one place to go, and being able to be connected to a behavioral health, so mental health, substance use or addiction appointment. The other part of that was to tell the story on how long our wait times, how long does it take to get into services in our community, and what services are residents being matched with. So, over the last year, you know, as with many pilots, it's been bumpy, but it's been very informative. We are lower than anticipated with the callers that are calling in. So, when KPMG came in in 2019 and did their study, they estimated on average, we would be seeing about 1,000 people contacting the CAM for services. We're per month, sorry. 1,000 per month. And what we're seeing is we're about 1,600 in total. So, we're, we're much lower than what was anticipated. But what I can tell you is, of those 1,600 residents, we are providing a cutting-edge service that is really not being provided anywhere else in the nation. I think where we need to really see some continued growth is marketing. So, no one knows about it. So, we've worked with referring partners that we typically work with in our space. So, we work with the school, we work with the public defender, the sheriff's office, kind of those normal partners that Human Services works with. We have not done a splash. And I'll just say, you know, I've been on the media, but no one's following me. So, like, I don't have, like, this big following, you know? Barry and I talked about that. So, I think there's a real opportunity that if we're gonna continue with prioritizing access for our residents, we really have to really come up with what is that marketing strategy so that everyone knows about it, that it's on buses, it's on billboards, that we have commercials. You know, there's other partners in community that are always on TV after Rays games and Lightning games. We're not there. There has been funding allocated for marketing, but I'll say it's really small scale. So, in addition to the staff, it's right around $35,000 in paid marketing. I don't think that's enough. So, one of the topics that I wanted to talk about today is that, you know, in addition to the Regional Opioid Settlement Fund, the City-County Fund, the county did receive one-time settlement funds. It's in a separate account that has to be used in accordance with the opioid plan, but it's not part of that regional or city funding. And there's been four settlement payments. It's right around $675,000. And part of what's listed in the opioid plan is supporting call centers that provide access for substance use and mental health services. So, what I would like to propose in year two of this pilot is that we utilize that funding, so it's not another ask of the General Fund, but it's to really do a splash. You know, maybe it's changing the phone number. Maybe it's not a 1-800 number. Maybe it's a three-digit number. Maybe doing paid advertising, paid commercials. You know, my understanding of a year-long bus campaign is $140,000 to get, you know, bus wraps. That's in addition to paid social media, you know, real airtime, making sure that our residents understand what we're trying to accomplish. I think that's been the missing piece. The clinical services that are being provided are amazing. The touches that they're doing with residents is amazing. And if I can just tell you a little bit, over this past year, while, while those numbers are low, and I will say, they are lower than what we anticipated, I want you to hear what we've been able to do for some of our residents. We've been able to secure 202 appointments. This is who's attended. So, 202 residents attended appointment for psychotherapy. 27 have been admitted to inpatient detox. That was not occurring before. It was call after call after call. We are admitting residents directly from the emergency room through our Pannell's Matters program, or from various other referral entities. 19 have been admitted to outpatient detox. Again, that wasn't happening before. 24 have been admitted to intensive outpatient. That's a higher level of care. So, residents are calling the CAM, they're being matched to that level of care, and they're being booked into that intensive outpatient appointment. 25 families have been admitted into family-based behavioral health services. And we have one resident, cuz this is also part of the CAM, we wanted to make sure that they had access to psychiatric services. So, if someone came in and they had 10 days of medication left, we have secured appointments for them to have that bridge prescription. So, they meet with a psychiatric nurse practitioner or a psychiatrist, they're screened for what their medication needs are, and they're given that bridge prescription until they're able to get in with a regular psychiatrist on a go-forward basis. So, I think, you know, with, with increased marketing, increased awareness, I think it is endless on what we can continue to do in this space.
Quick question. Did you wanna go?
You're older.
So, marketing, if, if, in theory, works, it means that there is a captivated audience, so to speak, that needs it, but they just don't know about it. Where did these numbers originally come from? I know that our consultant put these things together and gave us these recommendations. Again, I would hope that the numbers are lower and we don't have the issues, but I'm suspecting that we do have the issues and the numbers are there, but they're just not aware of it. Can you talk a little bit to that piece, that original estimating, what is it, that thousand-per-month kind of thing? Where did it come from and why, why those numbers?
I think it would be, it was part of their kind of leading practice review, looking at our population, looking at how many individuals may have a mental health or substance use or addiction condition. So, I think it was just kind of that overarching statistics on looking at, you know, we have a population of around a million, on average, one in four. You know, I think that that's kind of the math that they were looking at.
Demographics here comparable to other areas that they may have been making that
I believe so.
assumption. Thank you.
When the sheriff does a PSA...
When the sheriff does a PSA on TV, he uses his own funds, right? Could we potentially ask him if he will do a PSA on this?
He absolutely, he absolutely would. And I think you hit on a really good point. We've got to get influencers, people where people are paying attention to what they say. But I also think, you know, if I saw a number, okay, I'm, let's say today I don't have an issue, and I see a number out on a billboard, am I going to remember what that number is when I actually do have an issue three months from now? I mean, somehow, we've got to make a connection. Because it's people in their most dire time, you know? And I think that that's the linkage that we haven't...
Because I don't, I mean, I think in terms of like people in the community, he's the most recognizable one.
Correct.
And he's a tough guy, quote-unquote tough guy. And, you know, if he does a commercial saying, you know, "Everybody has a problem. If you have a problem, call this number."
He would absolutely do that.
And the other idea that I had, because I'm not sure that a bus wrap would work. There was some state laws that I think may prevent PSTA from doing that. And the other thing that I just thought of is maybe, you know, talking about, you know, somebody of like stature or influence, maybe going to some of the local sports teams. And, you know, not doing a commercial, but if they have an athlete that we can use on like a digital campaign, or like a print thing, to put their face next to the, you know, phone number.
If we can get, if, I really believe, and I know Commissioner Scott put out a memo, and so I think the commission should discuss this. If we can get some influencers to where people look for the number when they need the number, I think that would make a big difference. Right now, I don't think people even know it exists, so they don't even look. Through my own personal experience helping a family member, you know, I, and I kind of know a little bit about this, I couldn't navigate their system. I couldn't find anywhere to help them. And I know they have services there. There was nowhere to go. And so they end up in an emergency room, and they end up being locked down. And guess what? That person's never going to go back. Okay? So making that connection is real important. But we also agree with the commissioner's thing, and Karen and I have talked about this. At a certain point, if it doesn't take hold, it doesn't take hold. It's a hot, you know, but I don't, me personally, I don't think we're there yet, okay? But that's a commission decision. It's got to make financial sense, too. It can't just be about emotion. We fully understand that. But we've got to some way to make, to where people understand that there's resources out there, and right now, I don't think they do.
So what would it take to change to like a three-digit number? Is that something that costs money, or because we're a government agency, we can just do that?
There's a lot that goes into that, because then we talk about 211, and that was, you know, part of that. But 211 is far different from this. That's a, that's a referral system. What they have across the Bay, intent Bay Thrive is a referral system. It's saying, "Call this number." Okay? And then the drop-off rate of people that actually engage that service and get help plummets, right there at that transfer. And so I think we've got to look at all those. I don't have the answer. Maybe Karen has the answers to this, but there's, we have to have some way of making this easier, for it to be effective.
I mean, because I just think if you do like an ad that, you know, like the sheriff's face, have a problem, you need help, call 555.
Right.
You know, have like some athletes, you know, you need help, call 555. Like, people will remember something like that.
Yeah. And there was, if I remember, we were looking at this, and it took us a while to get there, we were kind of looking at our local, all the local efforts that were ongoing, somewhat splintered, somewhat, you know, again, I don't want to get into all of the stuff, because there was a lot of good efforts. I mean, we have hospitals that are making efforts, especially on behalf of first responders. So in that, in that global scheme, I guess, or global picture of mental health issues that our residents have, just trying to, just trying to get, circle back to what niche this field fills, if you, to get a better sense of, you know, again, with the right marketing, the likelihood of success. You know what I mean? I'm not, you know, I mean, there's no proof, or there's no guarantees, but I think just have a better feel, again, just kind of maybe backing up as we have this discussion, to make sure that we're on that right path, and that there is a, you know, again, upfront, you don't know how it gets received, but that there is a real want for a service like this. I didn't say that there was not a need, it's just how does this service satisfy that need?
Well, there's a couple of things, commissioners. One, I mean, I'm going to brag about the work that Lourdes and Karen and team have done, because, you know, now, somebody goes into the hospital, okay? They're going on medic, they've got Pinellas Matters right there, okay? There's an, rather than giving them naloxone and sending them back out onto the street, if you have a drug addiction issue, if you have a mental health issue, you probably have a drug addiction issue, okay? And so these codependency issues, they treat that, but they now have a resource to connect them with, into an appointment, not just a referral. And that's, so that makes a big difference. The sheriff has a mental health unit. Again, this program can be tied, is being tied in to them. Other police agencies have mental health units. So it becomes a resource for them, rather than just addressing the issue, de-escalating the issue, and then leaving. And there's that tie that they never had before. Getting the appointments was key, but it hasn't, it hasn't panned out to the volume, to the commissioner's point, that we predicted. Will that occur in a year? That's the question.
So I think a three-digit number makes a lot of sense. I'm concerned about having a lot of three-digit numbers out there. And we've got 911, we've got 211, we've got 555, or whatever. Right, right. But I would really encourage us to look at some kind of a partnership with 211, because in the last 90 days, they got over 600 phone calls from Mental Health and Addiction Support Services. So it seems like they understand where that population is already, rather than us trying to reinvent the wheel and duplicate something and spend $675,000 in marketing, it just seems like, seems like they've kind of figured it out. So I would encourage us to see if we can establish some kind of a partnership with them, and, you know, rather than having just a parallel system.
Yeah. Karen, maybe you can speak to that. Karen, we actually have several contracts with 911, 211. They want to be paid every time that they provide that. We provide a significant amount of funding for them. So, but, you know, there's, there's issues with 211 that we have been trying to work on.
It's costing us a lot of money for our appointment, too.
Oh, it is.
There's got to be a sweet spot in there somewhere.
I'm not arguing that, Commissioner. I think there is more that we can do with that, but I don't know what it is. But Karen, you deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the difference, you know, 211 does get a lot of calls for mental health and substance use, but they're not, they're not booking appointments. So they're saying, "Call here, call this place, call, you know, this community mental health center." They're not securing the appointment, they're not following up, they're not doing a level of care assessment, so they're, I don't know that I would say it's a duplicate system. 211 is set up for information referral. 988 is set up as a safety net for those that are having suicidal ideations, and they connect to the CAM. So when someone calls 211 and they're ready to activate to an appointment, they're warm transferring to the CAM to book that appointment. If someone's calling 988, and they're not already connected to a provider, which the majority, from what we hear from the 211 team, is the majority of those that are calling 988 are already connected to a provider, they're already in services, 988 is the safety plan. So in the middle of the night, if you're having suicidal thoughts, you can call 988 when your provider may not be available. If someone is contacting 988, they're not in crisis, they need an appointment, they're directed to the CAM. Or if they're not ready to activate, they are given a list of places, because we want to make sure that residents have choice. I do know, many years ago, when this started, we met with each of, it was a different board, but we met with each of the commissioners to say, "Should we do two systems? Should we have the CAM, or should we, you know, dismantle 211 and start over and have it be one place?" At that time, it was the board's decision to separate. They wanted something new, they wanted the appointment structure, as well as the analytics of what the dashboard tells us about the system of care. This is a change management process. So originally, we weren't working with the standard providers that we were working with. Those were already the providers that were full. Many of those CEOs said, "I'm full. I don't need another referral stream," or they would give us one appointment. That is all changing. So when Unites came in, they met with many, many different providers that we don't contract with. They're not county-funded contracts, they're not the typical providers that we worked with. So that expanded the network for our residents. We're working with providers that we would have never referred to. I don't even know if 211 was referring to them. So of those 15 providers that we have right now, that are delivering both in-person and virtual care, they're all different. But we have now CEOs, we've had some CEO turnover, CEOs are saying, "Yes, I want to work with the CAM. I want a workflow with the CAM." So three new providers, new to the CAM, but not new to the county, have changed their minds, and they're willing to work with us. I cannot say enough about Operation PAR. Jim, under Jim's leadership, he has done so many changes with us that we're able to warm transfer onto the detox line, to move someone right into detox. And I can say, I've worked in social services, this is my 25th year, that you couldn't do that before. Like, it was call after call after call, and people were being turned away. And we've had some issues where we're booking an appointment, someone comes over, they get turned away for an issue. We're right on the phone with their leadership team, because we know. Prior to this, we didn't know. The caseworkers knew, the residents knew, but system leadership did not know.
So you're saying 211 is already doing warm handoffs to CAM?
Yes.
Why are the numbers so low, then, if they're getting so many calls?
Because people aren't ready to activate. So I think it goes back to kind of that gap between the 12, you know, the 1,500 calls to the 740 appointments. Accessing mental health and substance use care is challenging. So that's why some of the ads you may be seeing are kind of stigma-busting. I mean, this is a hard service to, I think, admit you need, and then follow through with. So I want to say, when we meet with 211, you know, half, maybe, that are coming in, that are saying, "Yes, I'm ready for an appointment," are coming to us, and probably another half are actually ready to activate. And that's part of that clinical screening that the clinicians are having with the residents. I think it's important to also note that, you know, the staff that are answering the phones, that are responding online at the CAM, are not call center staff. They're licensed clinicians, or clinicians that have been doing practice for six, seven years. That is a significant difference between call center staff at 211 and the CAM. I think one also, really, I think, distinct point is that when you work sometimes in community mental health, you navigate people to the services you provide. You know, because, so I've worked in mental health, and when someone comes in, you find the service within your organization. The CAM doesn't do that. So the CAM matches with a standardized level of care, and has a bulk of providers that provide that level, and then offer that choice to the resident. So it is, it is different. It's offering choice, it's also offering, if you want virtual care exclusively, you can have that, or you can have services in clinic.
Well, I just encourage to try to find efficiencies and partnerships wherever we can find them, because, you know, it seems there's a lot of cooks in this kitchen, but the results are not, the return on investment is not great. So I just encourage to try to find as many partnerships as we can, and work within existing systems to the point that they're effective, rather than create new ones.
The issue you raised, Commissioner, about the cost per appointment, is real. And Karen deals with that in the social service area, and she's pretty cold and hard about dollars, because she has to be. She can't solve all the issues, and so I'm glad she has to make those calls, rather than me, because, you know, any one person that can't get cares, one too many, right? They make those calls all the time on a lot of their social service areas. And so they're fully cognizant that this is not a cost-effective program right now. The question is, is when's the time to say it's, we got to do something different?
Yeah. Commissioner LaBella brought up, you know, the sheriff as being a spokesperson, which I think is great. And I'd, you know, still like to get a better sense of the end user and how they communicate. I'm thinking about, you know, high school kids who have the issues that they have, and the privacy that they seek, how best to communicate with them versus the person that is a shut-in at home with just a great deal of depression. And again, they communicate very differently. And what pathways do we have that are available, whether it's the sheriff, or whether it's, you know, just a young superstar musician that happens to connect with young people? Because at the end of the day, we want them believing in a system, and however that's transmitted. We know that the system is rock-solid if you access it. But getting there, you know, getting over whatever stigma there is, and, but also being able to hear the message in a way that they receive it. So, you know, I just think there's different pathways, and I don't think it's that simple. I think it's very complicated, whether it's churches and schools and hospitals, first responders, you know, seniors, vets, food-deprived folks that are having to make decisions about, I mean, it's just overwhelming. And where do they, who do they talk to? You know, there are a lot of folks out there, they just, you know, find the therapist that they've used before, and they go, and they start getting counseling, and they go through that. But there's a lot of people who just don't have that button, that place, that, you know? And maybe they just go there, and they find out, and then they go do it on their own. But I just think there's, it's a very complicated issue as far as communication. The messenger is important, but the pathway has got to be clearly laid out, I would think. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that that's why we really need to take a look at what that marketing piece is, because I'll say we've done, I'll say we've done the rounds. So we, so, you know, Human Services, we've marketed this to all of our normal players. So the call team, the sheriff's office mental health unit, 211, 988, the school system, public defender, AAA, all of those normal players that we work with, we work with the CAM. They refer to the CAM. Now, the mental health unit with the sheriff's office, because this is not a crisis service, their numbers are lower, but they do refer when it makes sense. But I agree with you. You know, the school is probably our biggest, is our biggest referral source, aside from self-referral. But we do need to figure out, it's not just connecting with those that are in crisis that recognize their system, their symptoms. This model was a prevention model. And in the KPMG report, they challenged us to say, "You have to back up your services and come to the front. The county has traditionally served highest utilizers of systems, the most deep-end, the most chronic." This really kind of brought it forward, and it is, it is a change in dynamics of what we typically do.
Well, I'm just going to say, you know, again, just as a resident myself, out there, you know, in, at a church and doing different things, there is, you know, the amount of communication coming is nothing. So I hear nothing. The church that I belong to, nothing. You know, and again, that doesn't necessarily mean it's good or bad. I'm just saying, it's not, it's not, it's, there's no awareness, at least from my, from what I, and I, you know, again, being part of this group, I'm more, even more aware. But it doesn't even pop up there to go, "Oh, that, you know, great." So if we're getting around, I know, you know, as an example, there's 20 churches in Dunedin, and they have, they have monthly meetings, and have we gone to that monthly meeting to talk about this service, and how it's so important to, for those pastors to get the message out to their, to their folks? Again, I don't know what the answers are here, but I think we need to ramp that up, because I do think there's value here, but we're not seeing it. And so whatever that, whatever that, whatever that takes, but anyway, enough. Thank you.
So I would suggest, and I hope you have consensus, that we do use that $600,000, that settlement money, again, it's not general fund money, to do a marketing campaign. I think you may need a firm to do a true campaign. You know, visit St. Pete Clearwater, it has a firm, and they do an amazing job. I'm not saying they're the right firm, but I'm just saying, if you use a firm, they know what they're doing, and they can, they can get more bang for your buck. So I hope you have consensus to move forward and use that money. I'm hoping there's going to be some nods here. I'm seeing some nods. So, but, you know, and I get we need to get more people in there, but I think, KPMG said that we were a crisis-only access in this county. The only way you could get access to treatment was if you got Baker acted or arrested, or something like that. So we are spending an enormous amount of money in ERs and in Baker Act facilities, and we have the data to show that. And that's why this is so critical to work at the front end with prevention. And again, as Karen said, nobody in the nation... end with prevention. And again, as Karen said, nobody in the nation does this. Many people give referrals and they'll say, after you tell your story, they'll say, I want you to call this agency, this agency, or this agency. Well, that person then has to tell that story and almost re-traumatize themselves every time they make a phone call. That's eliminated here. And, you know, Ashley questioned me because many times over the 13 years I've worked on mental health policy, I've always stated that I believe that this was the biggest crisis in the country and the most expensive crisis we have. And it affects government at every level of government. And so I'm going to give you one small example and I'm sorry to take up time, I don't usually spend a lot of time talking, but I'm going to talk about something that Dave would remember, but nobody else was on this board when, and I wasn't on this board when this board did this. So there was a study done in Miami on, on why their jail and, and court system got literally locked down. And they found that 95 individuals, all mentally ill, all homeless, all addicted to drugs, literally clogged up their system in a revolving door where they would get arrested, they couldn't bond out, they'd get released, they'd get arrested again for urinating in public. And it literally shut down the Miami DA system. So our sheriff did a less, a modified study of that. And he found 33 individuals that were in that revolving door in our jail and court system that were costing us $3 million a year. $3 million a year. 33 individuals. We could have sent them to Harvard, for God's sakes. So what the county did is they got those 33, 33 individuals, and I'm, if I'm wrong, you can correct me, but summarizing, they got them housing and wrap, intense wraparound services, I think for $500,000 was what we spent. And, and they never got arrested again. We got them out of the system. $500,000 for 33 individuals is a lot of money per person. But it saved us $2.5 million a year. And so what we don't know, when you do prevention, we don't know of those people that went, didn't end up in the ER, didn't get transported by our EMS system. Because it's hard to prove prevention. And if there's a way we can do that, we can correlate. We know our transports have gone down, our opiate deaths have gone down. I believe Pinellas Matters has a large part of that, but law enforcement has a large part of that. And so if you just look at cost of appointments, you're not getting a total clear picture of the indirect costs that we're saving as a result of that prevention program. And it's something we've never had before. And when Ernst &amp; Young did the, the gap analysis for Pinellas County, they stated that they thought the CAM was a promising program. My belief is that this program, being the only one in the nation, in the end, if we're successful in marketing and let the world know about it, I believe will be a blueprint best practice model that every county in this nation is going to want to replicate. And Unites has never done this. Nobody's ever done this before. So yet, we've had bumps in the road. But I believe if we can market this right, we will have a blueprint best practice model. If we're smart, we'd patent it and that way we can get money off of it. But I think it's probably the most critical and most important cost-effective thing we could do based on savings we get from ERs, ambulance transports and other things. And, and I just wanted to share that one example. And was it $500 we spent on that, high utilizers?
It was a million.
Was it? So even more. We spent a mil, oh, so we only saved $2 million instead of $2.5 million. But we spent, so that's even a higher number. $1 million for 33 individuals. I mean, if anybody heard that out there, they would think that we were crazy spending money like that, like we were drunken sailors. But we saved $2 million by spending that million dollars.
A year.
A year. What year, what year was that?
I think it was 2016.
Yeah, it was before I was here. So, you know, and just like the, the PIC team that we do, another, an empowerment program thing, the PIC team is getting those people that gets picked up by law enforcement on a regular basis. And we're giving them, you probably don't even know, we're giving them intense case management. All those people the sheriff identifies, if they end up in his jail or get picked up, anywhere from three or more times, he gets them in the PIC program. Again, this is high-end, high utilizers. Their, their illness has gotten significantly worse because they haven't had treatment. And so now, again, it's expensive. So we put them in intense case management. So they stay out of our jail. And are we getting a huge return on investment? I believe we are. Can I prove it? Because they didn't get arrested again? It's hard to prove, right? But I believe that that program has kept enormous amount of people out of the criminal justice system. And so I'm done with my soapbox. I appreciate it and I do support the marketing money. It's not general fund money. And I think it's the best way to spend that money. And also one last thing, I think the opiate settlement, those RFPs when they come in, we didn't put in that RFP anything for marketing. So we did the exact same thing we did with CAM. We didn't include marketing for that program. And that program, I believe, whatever we end up picking, will be closely connected to CAM and utilizing CAM. So, and it'll be for housing and all kinds of things, I believe. I haven't read those proposals yet. So, and Vince, in case I'm out of town, you're going to have to get those, we'll have to get her, him training to read them in case I'm not available. So, so I think when it comes to the opiate, that's going to be a huge connection to CAM. But again, we did not allocate any money for marketing. And, and those resources will be here for 16 more years. And we can use that money for marketing. But for 16 more years, we're going to have significant money to, and, and we can't supplant CAM's money. But as it grows, we don't have to use general revenue for 16 years. We can use the opiate revenue to expand it and grow it and do other things. So I, long-term, we're going to have to come up with a sustainability plan for 16 years from now. But I, I really believe we're going to have one of the most amazing programs if we're successful in marketing. Thank you. Sorry.
I just wanted to give you a more realistic number when it came to meal services and whatnot for seniors. We received from the Department of Elder Affairs, $104,950.20. We funded only for three months because of the issue with setting a budget. When we would normally get $419,880.80 to be able to provide those services. So as you can hear by those numbers, that's a significant decrease and makes it a little challenging.
And I don't think area agency received the request for funding from the application that was submitted from the department. So, from our, you know, funding source.
Any other questions, comments?
I had a few questions. Excuse me, Chair. This discussion that we're having about the CAM, are we talking about whether or not we should kill a program or invest in advertising for the program, see if we get better results? Is that the conversation we're having?
We're just talking in general about how, how we make it better.
Make it better.
Or what do we, at what point in the future, if it doesn't get better, what do, what do you do with it?
Okay. I was, I was just confused a little bit about that. So, but what I'm hearing is there's money available to increase the advertising for the program. Okay. And then do, do, how much have we invested? Do we know how much we've invested to date to, to put the program together and how long it's taken?
It's about 1.3 million per, per year.
That's, and how long, how many years is the program?
A little over a year, right?
Yeah. Well, we went, we went live, May of last year, but we had a year of, before that where we were doing program implementation. So I believe we're in year three of operations. So the contract expires 9/30 of, of 26.
And then we said we can't, Commissioner Peters, you can't, can't track? We don't know people who've contacted and been in, and that, and we've put in contact, we've made appointments with, we don't know if they've ever been arrested again after, we can't track that?
Yeah, we're not, we're not currently tracking by person. So that was not part of what the CAM was intended to do. That would, that would increase the cost of the overall program to do kind of that longitudinal study by person. That work was done for the PSAT program in 2016, looking at both recidivism in jails as well as hospital emergency departments, as well as the local crisis stabilization unit. So that study was, if you wrap services around those highest utilizers, what's the return on investment? That was not part of what the CAM was designed to do.
Is there a prohibition to, to, I don't know, run the names through the sheriff's office, find out if they've been arrested? Or is that against the rules or?
They do work on aggregated de-identified data. And so they have that. And that's the evaluation they put together to be able to evaluate the health of the system as a whole.
I think, I think just one thing to consider too with that is sometimes for those that are seeking care for substance use services, sometimes there is an engagement in a criminal side to further your addiction. So I want, I just want to, want to be careful that we're very clear with, I mean, that may deter more people from calling, I guess is my short answer, is that if they know that we're going to do a study after, because of that whole substance use and addiction side.
All right. I just, I had questions because I think we're still, still an evaluation program, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I appreciate, you know, Karen, we talked a little bit about the, the program and stuff, just so I can get more, you know, information up to speed on. So, you know, I think it's worth looking like over the next year, when the contract expires in 9/30/26, to really see the, the data and statistics and using those marketing dollars to then, you know, kind of reevaluate to the chair's point, you know, should we sunset? Should we, you know, depart, transition? So I think it's good kind of keeping it in place for the next year, using those dollars so we can really kind of get a good full picture before making a determination. So, thank you.
Just the idea of, of things that don't happen, that you can't measure. And I, and I, you know, again, I'm, this is a field that I learn more about every year and it's, and I'm way up the learning curve and still learning. So, and all the dynamics that go on. But, you know, we had a suicide of, of a, of a young person, a high school senior in, up in North County, a couple of years ago now, you know, loose truck of time. But, and that's all, one person, is all that matters, right, for, to justify sometimes capturing, you know, having a big net out there. Maybe, you know, we just don't know, having the nursing program in the schools, having this program, were we able to keep another young person from dying or killing themselves? And I, I, I just, there's, there's a value to that that just, that goes through the roof. The other thing is, is that on our, on all of these, these, all of our food shelters that are out there, as the inflation was going crazy the last few years, more and more people were struggling. And having to get over the stigma of going to a place to get some food help, you know, just a little bit. They don't, they, they were right at the line and then all the inflation, and now they're, now they're kind of, you know. So there's, there's, there's emotional and stuff that goes on with that and also financial. So this is another area that, I know it's, there's not as much stigma today as there was, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago, or even 10 years ago. But it's an area that we have to get over. I mean, our first responders have a, a way to go to one of the hospitals and, and not be known. I mean, it's that, you know, there's still that in play. And so there, but again, a circle all the way back to what we've been talking about. And that's better understanding the communication of what we have, making sure that what we have is of got, is of value. And that we get that out specifically to end-user groups. Because I could see the sheriff standing up and with a, with a valedictorian from a high school talking about young people needing help and talking on a, on a public thing. So you're talking the sheriff and you're talking about a young person who connects with those folks better, about, you know, if you're having an issue, go talk to the nurse, call this number and get some help. And so I, you know, again, I, I do think the evaluation process is so critically important. And I, I think for all of us at the local level, I think it's, that, that trade-off, it's not just numbers. Like, you know, the federal government just says we're going to cut. And I get the, I get that because we've got waste in so many places. But when it comes right down here, we're the ones that need to evaluate how it's affecting us. And, and so I think it's just prudent that this commission asks those questions. And I think it's prudent that we drive home the importance of the marketing, specific target marketing, using people like the sheriff or others that, to get that message across, so.
Yeah, I agree. And I think it's important, you, the point that you made about the youth who completed suicide, you know, I talked to Donna Sicilian with the schools often and the youth that are completing suicide are not the youth that you are typically concerned about. So we have to figure out how to reach those youth, the valedictorians, the sports stars, those that are not on the radar. Donna has said that for many, many years. That's who we have to figure out how we can connect them to the CAM, how we can market to them, because they're on no one's radar. And then something like that happens and it's a surprise to the entire system.
Yeah. And we, we've been talking about the folks that are on the radar. And that's fine, too. But there are so many others that, that aren't. And I think to your point, anyway. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Good discussion, everybody.
All right. So my second topic for discussion, everyone's going to kill me. So the Pinellas County Health Program. So I've listened to the strategic planning sessions and some of the feedback during topics that have come up. And, you know, of note, the county has been involved with an indigent care program since 1959. And we started our mobile medical unit in 1988. And so for the past 37 years, it's grown, it's expanded. It really is targeted to serve those who only qualify for our health program. So those that are experiencing health, homelessness, as well as those who have 100% of the FPL or less. And so just numbers-wise, that's an annual salary of $15,650. So we are serving the absolute most vulnerable in our community. What I would like to propose this year, we've tossed around some different strategies, but I would like to look at purchasing an evaluator to come in and look at all of the services that we provide. So some of those, just so that, you know, the services, it's primary care, behavioral health care, dental care, specialty care, hospital services, vision and pharmacy. So it is a robust service to only those who cannot afford any other type of medical care. And at $15,650 for a single adult, they're not able to afford copays. They're not able to afford copays for prescriptions. We currently contract all of those services with the Department of Health. So the county is not performing those services. We have various vendors in community that provide the behavioral health services, the pharmacy services, the vision services, and primary care and dental care is provided by the Department of Health. So one of the strategies I would like to look at is having someone come in and look at our system of care. Is it the most efficient? Is it the most efficient delivery? Is it the most cost beneficial to the county? Looking at the free clinics. So we've got the St. Petersburg Free Clinic, the Clearwater Free Clinic. Are there synergies that we could be doing with those systems? Are there lessons learned from our current FQHC, so Evra, that we could be, you know, in developing future partnerships with? Or is this really the most lean model that we have for those residents? So portions of this is grant-funded. Whenever there's opportunities to come up, we are applying only for those that are experiencing homelessness. So we do not compete with that current FQHC. They are kind of serving general population. We are only applying for grants for the homeless. But that's, that's my recommendation. We do have some internal lapse funds this year. As Commissioner Peters mentioned, that PSAT program. So this past year, we allocated a portion of that program to the sheriff's office to have additional case managers at Safe Harbor. We were expecting a significant influx of residents going to Safe Harbor because of the unauthorized camping law. I think we're still kind of watching and evaluating what that is. So the remainder of that PSAT program stands in our budget, kind of watching and waiting to see if the capacity explodes at any of our shelters and if we need to shift. But my recommendation would be to use that funding to have an evaluator come in and really take a look at this 37-year-old program to determine, is this the best thing that we should be doing for the most vulnerable residents in our community?
Commissioners, this comes out of your strategic planning discussion where you brought up the ideas of, of the other FQHCs. Is there competition? This, this just puts it into an evaluation mode. And then we'll bring back and have that discussion with you based upon that evaluation.
So I love it. I think that's a great idea. And my question, you kind of answered a lot of the questions I had, just in what you were saying. So yes, I love it. I think it's the responsible thing for us to do. But my question, and I know you said you only do the homeless, but I've been informed, since Evra is now taking in homeless people, supposedly, indigent, that they may be competing against us for some of those same dollars. And that kind of concerns me. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I think, I think that is, that is true. So there is some competition. I think there's been some discussion- I think there's been some discussion that the county is competing with, you know, our local partners, so that is not the case. So if, you know, HERSA is the grantor for this service, if an opportunity comes out and it's for general population, we steer away. And I know Evra has expanded a little bit more into that space. We are very distinct and specific on who we serve. And just as a reminder, those services are provided at the Bayside Health Clinic, the Mobile Medical Van, the Street Medicine Van, and soon, we received another allocation from HERSA for a small van that we're looking to do specific to behavioral health on the streets. And our hope is to potentially look at doing medication-assisted treatment on the streets for those that are unsheltered within this program.
Well, that's great, and I'm glad you're getting that grant. I think that's the only concern I have, is that before, just FYI, Evra would never go after the same money that we were going for. We had a kind of a verbal agreement on that. And now that, I guess, they're taking a more indigent, they're now wanting to compete against us for those same dollars. They would love to take over our clinic and just be one FQHC countywide. So I love that we're doing the evaluation because that helps drive whether or not we would ever do that. So I like that it's data-driven, I really like that. And it would be nice if maybe Evra would be willing to not compete against us until that evaluation is done, would be great. Might be worth asking.
And I think that we're probably safe there because there's really limited new grants that are coming out right now from the federal government, so I think we're okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So now I'm going to move on to accomplishments. I'll try to go quickly, I know that we're...
I think your time's about up.
Yeah.
Do that quickly.
I will, I'll do my best. Okay, so I'm limited to six bullets, I just want you to know that when I put my accomplishments together for the team, I have 22 pages of accomplishments, so I'm doing my best with the many hats that our department wears. So I just want to start off by talking about sheltering briefly. So as you know, we were in shelter for 50 days, and that is primarily human services staff. So we set up, we operate, we manage, we lead shelter each and every time, even when it's tropical storm, we usually have staff in there for training and shadowing so that they can get more experience doing that. What that means for those 50 days is that we were working with residents on their FEMA applications, their HOPE applications, working with various social service entities in community, calling relatives for seniors who could not return to their place. So I just want to kind of really celebrate and congratulate my staff. When they are asked to do, they step in, they step up, and they were there for 50 days away from their families, some round the clock. And it's a nerve-wracking situation for some of our first timers, and one of my staff said, "Please don't send me, please, I don't want to." And now she's a shelter manager, and she was in those shelters for 50 days working with those residents. So just congratulations and kudos to my team and the collective impact for the rest of the group as well.
Absolutely.
So moving quickly, we touched on this last year, so we were able to successfully transition our Community Connections team. So historically, we were in two locations. We were paying lease costs in Clearwater. We closed that facility, moved all of our staff to the St. Pete location with several outposts in community to make sure that we still had touches in North County. That saved the annual, general fund about $120,000 in leasing costs, not in our budget, in a different budget, but it's still an overall savings and increased efficiencies when we're going into one space. Our Family Housing Assistance Program, so this is rapid rehousing for families with children who are experiencing homelessness. We were able to rehouse 49 families this past year on an average of 88 days, which is an improvement over last year because it took 131 days the year before, so we're seeing gains. We also transitioned one of our case managers to really work on workforce development with that population, and those that engaged in the service, 50% of them increased their income while they were part of the program. We've talked about the Hospital Directed Payment Program and LIP, so that was initiated last year, that's on the agenda for this upcoming Tuesday. But what the hospital systems were able to do because of the action that this board took was they were able to close the gap on Medicaid reimbursements and charity care and utilizing those funds, they were able to increase operating room capacity, update technology. Johns Hopkins All Children's is improving their maternal and infant health outcomes and expanding their program. HCA invested $30 million in new equipment and renovations in their space, so all of that work that goes on is really making a community and collective impact for our residents. Lastly, I just want to touch on consumer protection. So over the years, we continue to hear that there were insurance brokers that were targeting our most vulnerable in the community, so going to those places where homeless live and offering money, a sandwich, a tablet to sign them up fraudulently for ACA insurance. So our team lifted that up to consumer protection, consumer protection lifted that up to the authorities, and recently, they were just notified that because of the work that this community did, there was a VP that was just arrested on a $133 million fraud scheme that was aimed at targeting our most vulnerable residents. So just kind of how the entire department works together and really holds others accountable that are taking it out on our residents. Quickly, work plan. So we're going to continue working on the ODS, we're going to continue expanding in Pinellas Matters, so we have a meeting at the end of this month to expand that program at Largo Medical, as well as Largo Medical Indian Rocks. Because we like to punish ourselves, we worked with ARPA and BTS, and we are implementing three new technology systems this year. My team is just ready to just burst. So we are implementing a case management system, we manage 240 contracts manually, so we are working with technology, AI, BTS, to really implement a smooth management process for that. We are implementing a new case management system, as well as a new electronic health record within our system. We are also pulling in the Department of Health. So historically, we had two electronic health systems, one for the healthcare for the homeless and one for the Pinellas County Health Program, that kind of indigent side. We're moving all of that into one record right now. So very, very efficient, very, very helpful with data and reporting, but it's a lot of work. We're going to continue monitoring CAM operations, and then we are also operationalizing the regional opioid settlement funds. So again, we have the regional funds that RFP just closed on June 1st. We received about 10 applications ranging from $3 million to $30 million. So the community did respond with collaborative transformative responses. The OFAB Board is meeting at the end of August, and then those recommendations will be brought back to this Board.
Thank you.
And I have performance measures, I'll just really go quick.
No, they can read those.
Okay. All right.
You don't have to go through this.
All right.
Yeah, well, we talked about a year left on the CAM, right? We're talking about $675,000 to market. It needs to start yesterday. So this isn't one of those things, we go out for six months of, you know, getting the right person to come in, the right group to come in and market, we got to get the right person, but we really got to get moving on it.
Hundred percent.
Limited time. The messages have been out there, we just have to get, you know, ramp it up. I, you know, really want to give this a shot in the arm, but it's not going to happen overnight again, you know, so see some improvements this year in terms of reaching the folks that need the help.
We hear you, Commissioner.
All right.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
All right. Well, why don't we take five minutes and then we'll come back and see if we can knock out emergency management before lunch.
So, let's get through emergency management and then we can break for lunch.
So, good morning again, Commissioners. Tony Merrill stays right next to me for the next one here. And Kathy Perkins and Betsy Farley are over here. They have a table.
Alrighty. Thank you Commissioners for allowing me to present the budget for emergency management. On page one, you'll see the department purpose with Pinellas County Emergency Management Department. This department is supported 100% by the general fund. And you will see the actuals from these tables on pages, on page one, from fiscal year '22 through '24, along with the budgeted '25. If you turn to page two, we'll discuss some of the efficiencies and cost-saving measures that the department has taken over the last couple of years. In fiscal year '26, emergency management was able to realize cost reductions of $42,000, which included a reduction in their consultant training, deferring partial replacement of the EMA and EOC copiers, and eliminating a desktop computer for the county information center. In fiscal '25, the department was able to realize cost-saving reductions of $23,000 by decreasing communication equipment costs by implementing the Starlight Satellite System, decreasing inventory and durable medical equipment, and decreased overtime for staff. In fiscal '24, the department eliminated the radio battery replacement program, negotiated a maintenance contract with the purchase of the plotter, and partnered with Duke Energy, FEMA, Texas A&amp;M for hurricane kits and free training opportunities which they normally would have had to pay for. On page two, we'll jump down to the bottom where we'll talk about the budget drivers. In fiscal '26, the budget is decreasing by $4,000 to $2.2 million. Of that, personnel services are increasing $39,000 due to career paths and ladders, position reallocations, and the FRS increase. The FTE count remains flat at 16. Operating costs are decreasing by $43,000 due to several factors such as the BTS replacement plan, a reduction, as spoken before, in the consultant training, and reducing the allowable training attendance from two employees to one employee at the National Hurricane Convention Conference. On the bottom of page two, the department did submit one decision package request for an additional FTE office specialist, too. This person would be responsible for performing administrative and clerical tasks and support succession training and planning for the accountant, too, position. At the present time, this decision package was not being recommended by the county administrator. If you turn on to page three, emergency management is not requesting any changes to their user fees for fiscal year '26. They did have governmental CIP projects which were presented on June 11th at the BIS session. And at this time, I will turn it over to Kathy.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here this morning. Kathy Perkins, the Director for Emergency Management. Since I've had the pleasure of being in front of you probably too many times this past year because of the events, and I've shared a lot of numbers with you, I really just want to highlight kind of even just some of the events that we've done in the last few weeks. We just held our annual Hurricane Expo down in St. Petersburg on May 31st, and we have over 1,500 people show up. That's double the number that we had last year. In one day alone, we had 1,425 hits to know your zone and 982 flood zone lookups, just in that one day. As we've seen across all of our communities, our residents are coming out and coming out in droves to all of the expo events, coming forth with many questions for what they can do to be better prepared. We saw an article where hardware stores are reporting that people are stocking up on materials to help prepare their homes. We are actually in the process now of planning two mitigation expos, which will bring out commercial experts to talk about flood mitigation, wind mitigation, restoration companies. And I've also asked if we could get some arborists and tree trimming folks out there because we saw a lot of trees coming down last year during hurricane season. This is all meant to help our community better prepare for events if one should occur. Our commitment to create and maintain information to our community and simplification of our one-stop-shop website at disaster.pinnellis.gov, and I love it when I hear all of you giving that website out. Even our county administrator just flows off his tongue now. You know, we have garnered a lot of attention with that. We had 851,000 views in October alone. In fiscal year '24, we had 1.7 million views of that site. So, people know where to help find information when we have something occurring. We continue to focus on the risks of the storms and stressing our actionable measures that community measures can take in our hurricane guide. And we've already exceeded our fiscal year '25 work plan goal with doing over 140 community events and reaching over 13,000 residents. Last Thursday, we held our second annual faith-based summit, and we had over 70 participants. Representatives from across all of our houses of worship shared their experiences, their ideas, and they're very committed to continuing to help our community prepare and continue to collaborate with us. It's through our work with our whole community partners that we have enhanced our response capabilities. Several of our churches last year provided step-down sheltering after we moved sheltering out of schools. They also offered critical help with getting donated items out to our residents, and they also helped with cleanup with tree trimming and muck and gut. There are just so, there are so many amazing partners. And they shared with us the stories of their constituents and we're going to continue to work with them in partnership. This past Saturday, we hosted our first-ever Spanish prep event, and we had about 450 people in attendance. It is our commitment to make sure that language is not a barrier for anyone to access emergency information. Chair Scott, I want to thank you for the recent preparedness video that you did. All of you continue to support our messaging and our mission to keep our community prepared. And as Commissioner Peters talked about yesterday, all of you become key ambassadors and messengers during disasters. So, thank you for being EM ambassadors. For this fiscal year, we have offered over 40 training sessions for all of our partners, and we've reached approximately 1,100 people through these trainings. And that includes such as incident command, small animal sheltering care, EOC 101, roles and responsibilities, talking about Web EOC and how to utilize that critical system, shelter training, and damage assessment. You can never have enough knowledge, and we are really blessed here in Florida to have the Florida Emergency Preparedness Association that we belong to that has statewide memberships where city, county, state, university, and private sector members share their lessons learned, best practices, and it's an incredible resource for knowledge and mutual aid. We often call upon this group to help us learn from their lessons and their disasters. We reached back to a lot of them this past year, even just to look at Lee County and what they were doing for permitting, substantial damage, mitigation practices, and even looking at how they've implemented their CDBGDR programs. Behind the scenes, we've updated our Web EOC boards and our GIS information collection and sharing, and we can continue to strive to share that best information to everyone needing to make operational decisions and a platform to share current status and request assistance. And because Chair, you mentioned that it was Friday, the 13th, this morning, we unfortunately found out last night that in the state budget, they cut funding for county Web EOC. So, this is something that we had not put into our budget, as we just found out about this last night. I got a quote this morning from the vendor, it's going to be about $125,000. This is a critical tool that we use. We have over 100 different partners that log into Web EOC. We use Web EOC to track all of the missions that come in. It's our common operating picture that we all work with. We disseminate information through Web EOC, and we process those critical mission requests and resource requests that come in from over 100 different partners. Last year for the three hurricanes, we processed over 4,200 mission requests. We also maintain our special needs registry database. We do our routing and our transportation through Web EOC. So, the loss of this software would be absolutely devastating to us. As of now, the funding from the state would end on July 1st, so they've given us very little time to be able to scramble.
Was that just for us or for any county that receives funding?
They've stopped funding for every single county.
Okay. I know I use your Web EOC a lot, you know, so, okay.
Is there a sense, Kathy, that their monies created some efficiencies? Or is it just because everybody had their own contract? We were just being funded for it?
So, a few years ago, we used to have our own direct contract for it, and then they wanted to put everybody under one umbrella. And I have to tell you, we had some hesitancy about that. We were a little nervous that something like this could happen. They kept giving us assurances that it wouldn't, so.
So, and so now we're going to go back to having 67 separate?
Correct.
Wow. Just wondering about cost efficiencies at the state level. But I guess if they push it out of there, then it just falls on us anyway, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Last year after the storm, we followed up with facilities in our county with hazardous materials, and we've really grown that program through a new hire that we made a little bit over a year ago. We continue to engage with all of these facilities for safety planning, and we've added notification, and we've provided additional training to them. So, I just can't be more proud of all of my staff as they continue to grow our programmatic areas. And as you look at our budget, you can see that most of it is for personnel, and a small part of it for is to ensure that we have the EOC ready. We do maintain a small warehouse where we keep some emergency supplies. We store generators at Fleet and special needs supplies at Walter Pinal through the school board. We ensure that the emergency operations center is ready to go. And due to recent retirements, we're working even more closely with BTS to ensure the readiness of that critical facility, equipment, and operational software. We have communications equipment, thanks to all of you and your decision packages, and getting our pod and satellite runners that can augment radio systems. We have our own cell tower capability, and we have satellite capabilities that we can deploy very quickly to any of our communities in need. The biggest and most critical portion of our budget is personnel. The experienced staff that we have are able to navigate so many different events. And as I mentioned, last year, they processed over 4,200 resource requests. We developed 62 situation reports. We implemented recovery support functions to be able to continue on the critical work that was started during the response. Other than two retirements, the rest of our staff continue to show up and amaze me every single day with a smile on their face after everything that we've been through. We engage our partners, and we work to improve our operations and assist others in planning and preparedness. And any given day, at any time, we could be called upon or activated to support our partner agencies. Just a few weeks ago, as we had staff that were walking out the door to go home for the day, we got notified by the city of Clearwater of the structural compromise of their high-rise building. And we were able to, we stayed, and we called out to PSTA and the American Red Cross. I even reached out to Brian Lowak for possible hotel support. Having staff that is experienced, to have the right training, and have developed working relationships and networks of resources and support is priceless. I could not be more proud or honored to work with this team of 15 dedicated professionals that make up this small but mighty department. As you've heard across many of the presentations this week, disasters impact everybody, and we are there to help collaborate, coordinate across departments, appointing authorities, local, state, and federal governments, and all of our community partners. We may be most visible to you during hurricanes, but we are there every day. Nights, weekends, holidays, the times when disasters and things tend to happen and you need us the most. We're always monitoring, and we're ready to ramp up, do analysis, notifications, communications, and implement protective measures, and activate the EOC to support the community at their greatest time of need. You know, this is a tricky time period for us, as we don't know what's going to be happening at the federal level with FEMA, even at the state level, some of the legislative stuff, some of the unfunded mandates that may be coming down our way. But we will continue to navigate that, and as became our catchphrase during COVID, we'll just continue to pivot. So, I just want to thank you for your support. I met with you a few weeks ago, and you approved the capital improvement projects. We'll be launching those Exeter screens to better protect all of our shelters this summer. So, thank you for your time, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions, comments?
Well, I don't really have any questions about the budget. I just really wanted to say publicly, thank you again for you and your team and the, and what you bring to us in terms of expertise and comfort and, and a sense of confidence that we can take care of what comes our way. I hear from people about, you know, when you go up to the state to do some testimony, so to speak, or whatever they're looking for from an expert's perspective, and, and I listen to it with a sense of pride that what you all have been able to do for us here locally has been just incredible. And I want to, I just think, you know, you said a whole lot there that, but I just think back about the last, you know, eight to nine months and what we've all been through, and just, just know that we appreciate you and your team and the part. And I know it's a, it was a county team effort, so I'm not, I don't, I'm not trying to, but there's always a leader in that group. And I looked at you all for that, and it was comforting to know that you were at the helm and your team was there for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Kathy, ditto to everything Commissioner Rogers just said.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we, do we want to break for lunch?
We'll keep going. What do you want to do?
Yeah. All right. All right. Let's break for lunch. Come back at 12:30. Thanks.
Welcome back, everybody. Our next presentation is Safety and Emergency Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sitting next to me again, Toni Merrill for her fifth of five. So, we're good. She's almost done. And over at the other table, Jim Fogarty and Jody Seschler. And I'm going to call out Jason Miller. I know he's somewhere in the room. There he is. Also, great help in putting the budget together for the county. So, very, very helpful. So, the floor is yours, Toni.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. On page one, you will see the department purpose. The Department of Safety and Emergency Services is built up of several funds. The General Fund, the Emergency Service Medical Fund, the Intergovernmental Radio Communications Fund, the Emergency Communications E-911 Fund, and the Fire Districts Funds. You'll see all of the tables for those funds for fiscal '22 through '24 with the budgeted fiscal '25 on pages one through three. We'll talk about all of those numbers in a moment. If you go ahead and turn to page three, we'll talk about the cost efficiencies. In fiscal '26, SES is proposing a cost reduction of $395,000. And new billing initiatives, new ambulance billing initiatives, are expected to increase revenue by 1.1 million by taking the following actions. A new 911 wide area network to be implemented. Adjusting the Verizon plans due to a deep dive into the airtime usages. Implementing Phase One of warehouse relocations due to supply chains. And implementing the pilot program to contact with the vendor on insurance discovery. Previous year's cost efficiencies are in the document, and you can review those. On the top of page four, you will see some of the budget drivers that we had spoken about. And we will start with the General Fund. The General Fund is decreasing by 6.8 million to 6.6. Personnel is decreasing 6 million to 2.8 million, mainly due to staffing reallocations of the E-911 personnel from the General Fund to the E-911 Emergency Communications Fund. This change is due to regulatory change that permits all 911 functions within the center to be funded with the E-911 fees.
But explain that, because it's not a decrease on the overall General Fund. Okay? It's a change in the way it's being appropriated.
It's an accounting change.
Okay? So, it's not a decrease.
Yeah, the 62 employees are...
It's going to be paid as a transfer out versus a direct pay.
Yes, yes.
It's effectively a wash. There's a little bit of change, but effectively, we're moving them from being funded in the General Fund to being funded over in the 911 Fund. And General Fund is following it, but it's going to be over in that fund.
We're moving it over there, but then we're increasing the transfer by the like amount.
Correct.
So, it's a wash.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to think there's...
Is this another spreadsheet like Dr. Thogmott was talking about, or what?
No, we're good. Although, we do have spreadsheets if you want spreadsheets. So, as we said, the General Fund is decreasing to 15 FTE from the 62 that are moving over. Operating expenses are decreasing by $528,000, and that also is primarily due to this reallocation, because those operating expenses can now be charged out of the fee-based 911. Capital outlay is decreasing by $311,000, and that was just due to a one-time purchase in fiscal year '25. Our next fund is the Emergency Services Medical Services Fund. And that fund is decreasing by 13.1 million to 308 million. This fund is supported by the collection of ad valorem taxes and ambulance service fees. Revenues from the ad valorem is decreasing by 5.6%, approximately 5.7%. And that is based off of the current mileage rate. Revenues from various ambulance fees are decreasing by $3.9 million. The Emergency Medical Service Fund provides 92.1% funding for Safety and Emergency Services and maintains reserves of $87.1 million, which is a decrease of 16...
Welcome back, everybody. Our next presentation is Safety and Emergency Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sitting next to me again, Toni Merrill for her fifth of five. So, we're good. She's almost done. And over at the other table, Jim Fogarty and Jody Seschler. And I'm going to call out Jason Miller. I know he's somewhere in the room. There he is. Also, great help in putting the budget together for the county. So, very, very helpful. So, the floor is yours, Toni.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. On page one, you will see the department purpose. The Department Safety and Emergency Services is built up of several funds. The General Fund, the Emergency Service Medical Fund, the Intergovernmental Radio Communications Fund, the Emergency Communications E-911 Fund, and the Fire Districts Funds. You'll see all of the tables for those funds for fiscal '22 through '24 with the budgeted fiscal '25 on pages one through three. We'll talk about all of those numbers in a moment. If you go ahead and turn to page three, we'll talk about the cost efficiencies. In fiscal '26, SES is proposing a cost reduction of $395,000. And new billing initiatives, new ambulance billing initiatives, are expected to increase revenue by 1.1 million by taking the following actions. A new 911 wide area network to be implemented, adjusting the Verizon plans due to a deep dive into the airtime usages, implementing Phase One of warehouse relocations due to supply chains, and implementing the pilot program to contact with the vendor on insurance discovery. Previous year's cost efficiencies are in the document, and you can review those. On the top of page four, you will see some of the budget drivers that we had spoken about. And we will start with the General Fund. The General Fund is decreasing by 6.8 million to 6.6. Personnel is decreasing 6 million to 2.8 million, mainly due to staffing reallocations of the E-911 personnel from the General Fund to the E-911 Emergency Communications Fund. This change is due to regulatory change that permits all 911 functions within the center to be funded with the E-911 fees.
But explain that, because it's not a decrease on the overall General Fund. Okay? It's a change in the way it's being appropriated.
It's an accounting change.
Okay? So, it's not a decrease. Okay? Explain, Chris.
Yeah, the 62 employees are currently funded.
It's going to be paid as a transfer out versus a direct pay.
Yes, yes.
It's effectively a wash. There's a little bit of change, but effectively, we're moving them from being funded in the General Fund to being funded over in the 911 Fund. And General Fund is following it, but it's going to be over in that fund. So, it appears...
We're moving it over there, but then we're increasing the transfer by the like amount.
Correct.
So, it's a wash.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to think there's...
Is this another spreadsheet like Dr. Thogmott was talking about, or what?
No, we're good. Although, we do have spreadsheets if you want spreadsheets. So, as we said, the General Fund is decreasing to 15 FTE from the 62 that are moving over. Operating expenses are decreasing by $528,000, and that also is primarily due to this reallocation because those operating expenses can now be charged out of the fee-based 911. Capital outlay is decreasing by $311,000, and that was just due to a one-time purchase in fiscal year '25. Our next fund is the Emergency Services Medical Services Fund, and that fund is decreasing by 13.1 million to 308 million. This fund is supported by the collection of ad valorem taxes and ambulance service fees. Revenues from the ad valorem is decreasing by 5.6, approximately 5.7 percent, and that is based off of the current millage rate. Revenues from various ambulance fees are decreasing by $3.9 million. The Emergency Medical Service Fund provides 92.1 percent funding for Safety and Emergency Services and maintains reserves of $87.1 million, which is a decrease of 16 million. The fund maintains reserves at 39.4 percent of the total expenditures. Personnel services is increasing by $424,000 due to career paths and ladders, position reclassifications, and FRS increases. This department's FTE count remains flat at 60. Intergovernmental Radio Communications Program, excluding reserves, is increasing 291,000 to 1.1 million. This increase is being driven by the reallocation of radio system costs from the City of Clearwater Police Department joining into the county radio system. The increase will be offset by a 291 decrease for the usage of other departments.
So, Clearwater's getting, coming onto our system?
That means you get countywide coverage, right? Everybody's one.
Right. So, the City of Clearwater, for years, has tried to have their own Harris-based radio system. We've convinced them, and they're joining our system. And the cost of the system is not changing. The cost is a fixed amount from last year to this year. The allocation methodology for attributing those costs is based on airtime. And so, because the police departments with Clearwater on will have more law enforcement airtime, that airtime allocation is increasing, and a similar decrease is occurring with all of the other. And I've got a chart if you'd like to see what that looks like. But it's financially neutral.
And how many cities are still out on a different...
This is the last public safety. It's been 30 years, and kudos to Dave Hare and his team. It's been 30 years we've been trying to get them over here. And this is the last public safety agency, so all public safety agencies are on our Motorola system probably by the end of the year.
And the implication of that is?
You have tremendous operational efficiency. For instance, the radios that the sheriff will buy for the jail will be able to directly talk to a Clearwater police officer who's at the jail or at the criminal justice system because of a court case. And so, those radios, although they can connect now, that's more of a patch, electronic patch through the dispatch center. This will enable them to talk directly. Also important, it will save the taxpayer in Clearwater roughly about $300,000 on recurring costs annually because they won't have to pay for a radio system.
I think that's great news, that everybody's now on board. So, just didn't want to pass without the explanation from you. Thank you.
This fund is also supported by the collection of moving violation surcharges revenue and a General Fund transfer. Revenue from moving violation surcharges is decreasing approximately $100,000. The General Fund transfer is increasing about $560,000. The Intergovernmental Radio Communications Fund provides less than 0.1 percent funding to SES, maintains total reserves of $120,000, an increase of $33,000 from fiscal '25. Now, if you move on to page five of your documents, we're going to talk about the Emergency Communications E-911 Fund. Excluding reserves, this fund is decreasing $398,000 to 18.7 million. Including reserves, it's increasing $383,000. The fund is supported by the collection of state revenue sharing fees and a transfer from the General Fund. State revenue fund fees are expected to increase approximately $43,000. The General Fund transfer is increasing 8.7 million. This increase is due to the accounting change we previously talked about with the 911. The change facilitates transparency on how much the General Fund is needed to fund this program. The ultimate goal of obtaining the increase is to obtain an increase in the currently, it's like 40 cents for each phone bill that the citizens are charged, and that's for cell phones, landlines, and prepaid. I know the department is working vigilantly on doing what they can to get that increased. The fund provides 4 percent funding for SES and maintains total reserves of 1.7 million, which is an increase of approximately $780,000. Personnel is increasing 7.1 million due to the staffing allocation change from the General Fund, bringing the FTE count from 62, increasing the FTE of 62 to 122 full-time Operating... Oops, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, I'm just curious, is the reserve number, right? Is that necessary in this fund? Especially that big of a jump?
Yes, ma'am. This one is one of the reserves that's actually written into the code. So, at the end of the sixth year, it's supposed to have 25 percent of its revenues in the code, in the fund. And so, we're watching it every year. We look at it the next year and the next year so that by the time that six years is up, it's got that in there. And so, if it doesn't, then we back off of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Operating expenses are decreasing 5.6 million due to a decrease in contractual services, which is a reduction of the law enforcement guide card licenses. Professional services had a large grant being completed and ended and contributing also to the reduction. Machinery and equipment is also decreasing due to that one-time purchase that was made in fiscal '25. At the bottom of page five, you will see that the department submitted two decision package requests for '26. The first decision package is a 1.5 million non-reoccurring increase to Phase Two of the... Say it right. The Plan by Traffic Preemption Working Group. Phase One was completed. We're now ready to implement and move on to Phase Two. The Eastlake Lake Traffic Preemption Pilot Program improved emergency response time compliance by approximately 3 percent. After review, the county administrator has preliminarily approved this decision package. Second decision package is a reoccurring request to add one full-time EMS instructor. This is also going to be a neutral. It's a wash. What's happening is currently the department is utilizing firefighters and paramedics on an overtime basis for these trainings. So, by bringing on a full-time person, they're able to eliminate that overtime charge, which will be hopefully a reduction. I mean, we're thinking that it's definitely going to be a reduction in their personnel. Also, at the time of this submission, the county administrator is recommending this decision package. At the bottom of page six, there is a table showing that the department is requesting several increases to their user fees. You can also see a more detailed table as Attachment Seven, and that is on page 35 of your package. Governmental CIP projects were presented at the June 11 governmental CIP Budget Information Session. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Jim, who is going to talk about the accomplishments, work plans, and topics of discussion.
Thank you, James Fogarty, the Bureau Director of Safety and Emergency Services. I'd like to take just a moment to introduce my coworkers, my team back here, who really make all the work happen. First, Deputy Director of Support Services, Dave Hare. Dave, if you'd stand up, please. Second, I've got the Director of the 911 Center, Judith Wasinski Price. And then, third, I've got the Director of Fire and EMS Administration, Craig Hare. And then, next to me, Jody Seschler, who's in charge of the Financial Services Division. I want to be brief. You can read the accomplishments that I listed. I won't repeat those. But I do want to start with reminding you of the partnerships that we have. Some of the partnerships people were here today. We had a service-level agreement with BTS that was put in place three years ago. And that service-level agreement really prevented us from having to hire a lot of technical people and then count on BTS to provide that for us. Been a very successful project. As a matter of fact, just last night, Dave and his technical team stopped a bunch of bad actors from getting into the 911 Center before they ever got in. And so, that's the benefit of those partnerships and service-level agreements. I don't have to have a staff of BTX experts because they do. We've got partnerships with marketing and communications. Ashley Genovani has been working with us every Monday. And when you see the news stories, because she's on-site, interacting with the public information officers from all the other fire departments and response agencies, and she's a direct embedded asset. And human services, Karen Yachim, you heard her work with the CAM, and you heard who worked with connecting the dots. We work really closely, providing and getting information, sharing the community problems, and deciding how to connect resources from my world of emergency services to her world of social and community services. And then, of course, we've got Jennifer with Animal Services. She brings the dogs over to the 911 Center, has stress relief. So, really, we've got these good partnerships. But I do want to mention by division, I won't go very long, some of the success stories. You've already heard about the support services bringing Clearwater Police Department onto our radio system. That's been attempted for years and years and years and years. And we brought that through to fruition. Again, it's going to save the taxpayers of the City of Clearwater hundreds and not hundreds of thousands of dollars in recurring costs while improving operations and really simplifying things, not having two radio systems. Under Fire and EMS Administration, I've got Craig Hare. I'm going to tell two stories here. One, you probably realize over the last couple of years, we've had millage reductions in independent fire districts. Not all of them, but most of them. We've had millage reductions in EMS fund. That doesn't happen by accident. That happens with cooperative partnerships with our response agencies, really understanding what things cost. Emergency services is very expensive. I'm not here to say that it's cheap. But we look at every penny and make sure that it's necessary first, and there's not an other way to do that. So, we've been able to moderate the millage, and we've been able to reduce that. But I wanted to tell a story from the storm, and there's a lot of stories. There's hundreds of stories, if not thousands of stories, about the storms that hit last year. But I'm going to tell a story if you bear with me a second. Many of you were there. Barry was there. It was, you know, three days after we've all been up. And it was during the time that the storms were battering the county. It was wee hours of the morning. You'll remember this. And we were faced with the types of problems that you would only see in a Hollywood movie. Up on the third floor, Judith's team was handling about 600 incoming calls an hour on the 911 lines, calls that have people hanging out the windows of their car on Howard Franklin Bridge, being washed away in the storm, babies being delivered. Down on the second floor, it was about 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning. The sheriff had just come in. He was soaking wet because US-19 had been flooded. We had reports of Largo Medical Center Hospital, the water was rising at about 14 inches every 30 minutes. It was an occupied hospital, and we had about two hours before the electric power short-circuited. Some of the St. Pete hospitals lost their water supply, and that's not just drinking water. That was water for sterile supply, water for the HVAC systems to keep them operating, and of course, lab works need water. So, we had this confluence that was really only seen... The only thing that was missing was the cigarette smoke you see in a movie. And I witnessed, like I say, in 53 years that I've been in emergency service, it's the most intense 12 hours that I have ever witnessed. You probably didn't recognize or realize what was going on behind the scenes, but many of you in the room did after being up for 36 hours and solving the problem. How do you deliver a recurring thousands of gallons of water to a hospital's second floor in the middle of a storm? How do you do that? With help from Tom and the airport tanker trucks and some of the folks, we did it. How do you move an ECMO patient, someone whose heart is being pumped by a machine? How do you move that from Largo Medical Center to Morton Plant when the roads are impassable and the water's rising? We did it. How do you come up with 1,000 ambulances at 4:00 a.m. just in case you've got to evacuate all those hospitals? I saw county departments. I saw a lot of dedicated people come together and make it all work. I want to claim that as a victory. The emergency services branch of the Emergency Operations Center, second to none. Kathy's team was there, part of it. And again, I'll get off my soapbox a little bit, but I think it really... You need to understand the behind-the-scenes things that are going on in these types of events. I want to talk about Jody's team in the Financial Services Bureau. Jody and her team is responsible for over $107 million of revenue. And she does that not just and take advantage of it. She outsources things when it makes sense to outsource. We've got a company with... In North Carolina, that does a lot of our medical billing. And so, the types of things that are not very complex, we have somebody else do. The types of things that are very complex, she and her team, she's been able to reduce and improve the cost of ambulance claims by $48.89, which is very tough to do. She's got a collection rate that is the industry's highest. But more importantly, she approaches the whole money thing as an advocate for the patient. You'll have her team spend hours on the phone when somebody's insurance, Blue Cross, Bruce Shield, or whatever the insurance carrier is, says, "Oh, no, we're not going to pay that." And when we know they have an obligation to pay it. And they play the role of patient care advocate. And then, finally, I want to mention the Regional 911 Center, Judith Wasinski Price's team. Now, Judith herself is responsible for obtaining over $2 million of grant money from the state that offset the General Fund. You don't see it yet. At your meeting next week on Tuesday, you'll have an agenda item that says, "Hey, you know, apply for a grant for the state." That'll probably be another $2 million next year if she's successful in obtaining that. But maybe more importantly, the 911 Center is not just transitioning. It has a culture of excellence. It was very different five years ago. The culture of excellence, and Barry knows what I'm talking about, provides for winning the National PSEP of the Year Award, stabilizing employee turnover rates, having passionate and skilled employees, and measuring and improving each and every day. I've got the report from last night. We had 1,260 calls. 98 percent of them were answered in 10 seconds or less. That doesn't happen by accident. Her team is so passionate about what they do. They chose to test the circuits in the run-up to hurricane season because last year, we had as many as 600 calls per hour. They wanted to test what would happen if 1,000 calls per hour hit the circuits. So, they did it. They did live tests, didn't drop a call, and it performed flawlessly. I won't go into the metrics and measures. I'll answer any questions. But I wanted to thank all of my 197, 98, 97.2 employees. I wanted to thank them for what they've done this year, and I expect they'll do the same next. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Our final fund that we're going to go ahead and discuss is going to be the Fire District Millages. And this was an additional amendam that was entered into your package in Granicus. Six of the Fire District Millages will remain the same as they were in fiscal '25. Five districts are requesting a reduction, or we're looking at giving them a reduction. They haven't requested it, from fiscal '25. We do have one Fire District, Seminole, that has a proposed increase... There we go. There's the document. ...to their millage for fiscal '26, and that's due to some purchases that one was unexpected, came a little earlier than we had assumed it would. Now, these are subject to change with the July 1 taxable values, but I think that Jim would like to talk more about those or answer any questions in regards to those.
Commissioners, we're going to be bringing you some recommendations regarding how to address this before the July recommended budget. But it's a significant issue. It's primarily driven by a fire engine purchase. But go ahead, Jim.
Right. So, when we do the forecasting in some of the other districts, we try to forecast out not just next year's budget, but for multiple years. We did that last year. And last year, when we forecast Seminole budget, we didn't recommend that we'd reduce the millage because we were concerned what the outer years would look like. Since then, Seminole identified the need to buy a ladder truck. The ladder truck that they identified the need to purchase was scheduled to be out a number of years, but it takes three years to get a ladder truck. You don't just go to the store and buy a ladder truck. It takes three years. You have to order it today and deliver it three years. They had an opportunity for an off-the-shelf, standard, no-frills ladder truck. Wouldn't be... It was at a cost savings. And so, they placed the order and took delivery of it, will take delivery of it. And so they placed the order and took delivery of it, will take delivery of it this year, which really upset. And then they've got a second issue of building a fire station at the Bay Pines. This station has been planned for a number of years, and they're scheduling construction. So the types of things that happened that caused this, not that they were unexpected, they were just unexpected to happen this year and next.
But this is a significant issue, Commissioners, because a millage increase requires a unanimous vote. Is that correct?
We're fairly confident this will require a unanimous vote. I can't answer exactly.
So this is a little different. That's the reason we're going to be looking at some options between now and July and bringing back some options for you.
And just real quick, I might remind you, this district has enjoyed four millage reductions, not last year, but the four previous years. They had over 19, almost 20% of their millage reductions over those four years. And so, you know, part of that is trying to hit the right number.
Seminole handles a large part of unincorporated, don't they? So don't we cover about 60% of their budget? 70?
It's about 70%. It changes every year based on assessed value, but generally 70% is a good use number.
But it is a city fire department.
Right. So the city of Seminole represents 30%, and then the unincorporated area is 70%.
Right. Commissioner LaBelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did we know that they were going to buy this ladder truck this year?
We did not know they were going to buy it this year. We knew they were going to buy it, but just not this year. They would have had to order it. If they wanted expected a delivery three years from now, you have to order it now for a three-year delivery.
The assumptions had it being delivered three years from now. And financially, that would have worked within the millage amount, but because it was short-ordered. But there's some options we can do. So we're looking at some options. We can postpone building the fire station. We can, there's some other things that we're looking at, and they have some recommendations. We're going to review those, and we'll be talking to you about those before you have to vote on this. Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was kind of going to be my question. They purchased it prior to getting our approval for the money. So, and I understand they needed, don't get me wrong, just we're in a pickle a little bit as well. I have a question on page six for summary of proposed changes to user fees. So please forgive me if I'm just a little off-kilter, but where it says change, increase mileage per loaded mile, is that really, we charge $19.50 per mile, and it would be $20.16 per mile?
If I might ask my expert, Jody, to answer that question? She knows everything about that.
Okay.
That is correct. And also, something to be mindful of is our payer mix is 63% of our payer mix comes from Medicare and Medicaid. So we actually collect a fraction of that amount. So the Medicare, they pay us $9 a mile. And then actually Medicaid does not even reimburse for mileage, but that is our retail rate.
So the balance would be billed to the?
The balance would be a regulatory write-off. We are prohibited from balance billing when it's Medicare or Medicaid-related.
Okay. Thank you. And then, under, right underneath that dedicated standby per three hours, so in the case of advanced life support services, basic life support services, especially during COVID, we know that our services sometimes were held up, not by any fault of their own, but because there were additional things put in place. Sometimes they didn't have the ability to admit that person or take them into the ER right then and there. So ambulances and EMS units were waiting, sometimes way longer than three hours. Is that what this would be attributed to, or?
No, this is actually for special events if there was.
Okay. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. That was my only question for that page. Thank you.
And Commissioner, what Jody said about write-offs, you'll see those about once a year from ONB. We bring the big list of write-offs, and that's exactly what we're talking about right there.
Oh, so, follow-up. For years, there were service units at sporting events for high schools, which was really great because somebody always ended up getting hurt. And then that kind of went away because I'm assuming the schools ended up having to pay for it, and it was pretty much an expense. And so I've noticed it slowly come back depending on the school. Is that still the case, that that particular school entity, whoever it is, they have to pay for that service? Okay. All righty. That's it, sir.
I have a quick question. So under efficiencies and cost-saving measures, it says that in addition, new ambulance billing initiatives are projected to generate increased net revenues by 1.1 million. Is that because the mileage rate is going up, or what's specifically driving that?
No, it's a function of initiative we've put in place. Right now, we're doing a pilot program for, it's called deductible management, where, and it used to be get the bill out the door as quickly as you can. Now it's get the bill out the door at the right timing. So the claim is held until maybe the larger providers submit their claims and the deductible is met. So instead of billing the patient, then we're billing the insurance company. So when you can keep that claim out of the patient-pay bucket, you're going to increase your collection rate. So based on the data we've obtained so far through this pilot, we're seeing a significant ROI on that initiative.
Okay. Well, that's great news. How much longer does that delay the payment from coming in the door? There's a time cost to money as well.
Absolutely. We have a limit, a 60-day limit. So if the deductible is not met within 60 days, the claim will be released. However, again, even that cost delay, we're still seeing a better ROI by keeping it out of that patient-pay bucket.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right. All right. If there's no other questions, then I guess we're good. All right. Thanks. Appreciate it very much. All right. Next, we'll move on to the airport.
So Tom Juiceberry, Director, and Yvette Chin are making their way to the table. I'd also like to thank Chris McKinney for all the work he does putting the airport's budget together. And joining me here at the table are two folks. You remember James Lewis doing the capital. This is an enterprise fund. And on my right here is Harrison Netburn. Harrison is an ICMA Fellow, so he is not a budget analyst, but we have had him for several months, and we've been working with him, and we gave him airport. And so he has run with it and done a great job with it. So as a reward, he gets to present to you all.
All right. I don't know if that's a reward or not.
Hey, you know?
If Chris says it is, we'll leave it at that.
So welcome, Harrison. I appreciate it. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present the budget for the St. Pete Clearwater International Airport. So on page one, you'll see the department purpose for the airport. This department is 100% supported by the general fund, and you can see the actuals from fiscal years '22 to '24, along with the budgeted amounts for fiscal year '25 and '26. The St. Pete Clearwater International Airport budget consists of one fund, the Airport Revenue and Operating Fund, also known as Fund 4001. On the bottom of page one, you will see the cost savings and efficiency measures taken over the last couple of years. For fiscal year '26, the division managers ensured that they absorbed additional costs as much as possible. They studied the fiscal year '25 budget submissions to see if any of those expenses were not being used and eliminated them while allowing for those mandatory contracts to increase in value. In the middle of page two, you will see the Budget Driver section. The fiscal year '26 budget for the department, excluding the CIP Plan or Capital Improvement Plan, projects and reserves, decreased by 8.7 million to 44, about 45 million. The revenue is increasing 2 million to 50 million due to user fee increases. The personnel services is increasing slightly. The airport's FTE is remaining flat at 65. Operating expenses increased by 108,000 to 12.1 million. And the capital outlay is decreasing to 25 million, primarily due to a $9 million reduction in CIP. This is going to be partially offset by an increase in machinery and equipment. We're now going to move on to the bottom of page two, where you can see the decision packages for fiscal year '26. So this first decision package is the new electromechanical position for the airport facilities team. It's going to be one additional FTE. This will increase flexibility, capacity, and reduce the contract costs for repair and maintenance on the inline baggage handling system. And this funding for the decision package is being recommended by the county administrator. The second decision package is the explosive detection systems. This is a $110,000 request in non-recurring funds. And this decision package is being put to you guys to abide by the recent federal mandate that is requiring the airport to purchase two explosive detection systems. And the funding for this decision package is also being recommended by the county administrator. Next is the airport facilities, airfield tractor and mower. So PIE is requesting, in addition to its tractor fleet, to bring the total from four to five. This decision package is also non-recurring, and the funding for this decision package is being recommended by the county administrator. Lastly, we have the airport mini-truck, a third non-recurring fund purchase, and this will improve vehicle access for the PIE facilities team. The funding for this decision package is being recommended by the county administrator. So moving on to the middle of page three is the summary of the user fee changes. So the department is requesting changes to the processes and costs to their aviation fees and security card replacement fees. For full details of the proposed changes, please refer to Attachment 7 or page 31. Okay. So I'm now going to pass the floor over to James Lewis for the CIP report.
Thank you, Harrison. Good afternoon, Commissioners. James Lewis, Budget and Financial Management Analyst for Office of Management and Budget. So near the bottom of page three begins the CIP report for airport. He requested FY '26 through FY '31 capital improvement plan increases $92.1 million to $273.2 million. That's largely driven by increases to the terminal expansion project. That is a decision package for you this year, so we'll discuss that in a little more detail in just a moment. I do want to highlight grant funding for the airport. They do utilize a lot of grants in their capital improvements. Grant funding decreases $2.8 million as they spend down some of the grants that they've secured for their larger projects. The total grant funding is $94 million in the six-year plan. Of that total grant funding, 69.8 is anticipated future grant funding. And I just wanted to point that out to you because we use that as a budgeting mechanism to essentially demonstrate or show you the full expected cost of a project without including the revenues in the budget. We cannot spend those future anticipated grants. A lot of them are FAA entitlements that are allocated, but the department does still need to apply for the grant with the FAA and then bring it to you, the board, to execute the agreement. As that's done, we pull those anticipated grants into grant-funded budget lines. Those are all in the terminal expansion and parking garage projects. The FY '26 summary, FY '26 appropriations decreased $9 million to $24.5 million, bringing that in line with the past expenditures in the airport capital fund. The prior six-year average is about 14 million. That's really being dragged down by FY '22 and '23. They go through cycles with larger projects, so they've ramped up in the last couple of years. And going into these larger expansion projects and parking garages, they'll continue to ramp up those expenditures. So at the top of page four are the CIP decision packages. The first one is the terminal improvements, the terminal expansion project. That is increasing $97.7 million to $201.3 million. A lot of this increased funding is to be determined. 93 million is identified as to be determined funding, so similar to those anticipated grants. That is not counting as, on the revenue side, we are still working to identify where that funding is going to come from, but this brings you the full expected cost of the project. It also includes FAA grants and FDOT state grants. So this project, the design consultant, Commissioner, yes?
Sorry about that. So just looking at that, maybe you're going to go out of the explanation as to why there's such a big increase. Sorry, go ahead.
No, quite all right. Thank you. The design consultant agreement was awarded by you, the board, in May of 2024, and the construction manager at risk was awarded in January of this year. So the airport has just now begun to receive the very preliminary estimates from the consultant as they begin the design process of what this expansion is going to cost. So we've built this budget, this capital plan, on those estimates from the design consultants. Previously, we were bringing this with some very, very preliminary estimates, just based on looking around and seeing what some other airports have done. We've continued to look at that this year, looking at some other expansions that have been done at other airports, most notably the Southwest Florida International Airport down in Lee County. That is a larger airport. It's also a regional airport, but it's larger. They are also going through an expansion right now. Their first phase expansion was budgeted at about $300 million. They did have some increases as they got into construction. They phased their project out as well. This 200 million is for Phase 1 of the airport expansion. It's expected, if approved, that the second phase would bring the total for both phases at 370 million. The first phase for this airport is going to increase their capacity by about a million annual passengers, so they're at about 2.5 million per year right now. Bringing them up to 3.5, then Phase 2 would bring them to about 4.5 million. So total down there in Lee County, Phase 2 was $1.1 billion. So if we're looking at 200 million Phase 1, 370 for the whole thing, we're in a reasonable territory.
If I can, I'll speak on that just a little bit. The initial estimate that we had of about $110 million, that was, that came out of the airport master plan, which was completed about four years ago. So as was stated, since we brought on the design firm to go ahead and narrow it down, take a look at the concept, tried to do some value engineering, what they did, the initial came back and says it's probably be more like 300 million. Right now, it's scaled back to 200. And with that amount, we feel confident that we'll be able to pay that off without any debt, given for the terminal project. It's a C Mar project. We're bringing in the contractor board, they've never been awarded, but they'll be joining the design firm actually next week.
So that's the very, very preliminary that went to the preliminary. So obviously, we don't have any engineering stuff yet. So when was the very, very preliminary done? I mean, because it was.
About four years ago with the master plan.
I'm sorry, four years ago. Okay.
And of course, we've seen a lot of.
That's what happens when you're doing two things at once up here, so I apologize for that. So it was four years ago, and in that timeframe, that's the difference.
That's correct.
So much for very, very preliminary estimates. Thank you.
Yeah. The last thing I'll point out on this project is the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, is expected sometime next year. And as I pointed out at the beginning, we have 93 million in here that we've identified as to be determined. So we're going to be working on that this fiscal year, identifying that funding, determining where it's going to be from. Before the GMP comes to you, we will bring that identified funding. We won't bring you a guaranteed maximum price until you've identified and approved, until we've identified and you've approved the funding first. The second decision package is the Airco Taxiway D project. This project was bid a couple of years ago, and there were a couple of storm water modeling and floodplain issues. So they've gone through the permitting process. I think they're still finishing that up, but we're adjusting the budget to match around where. where those bids came in previously. So this project will be rebid, and we'll see what that comes in at. For FY '26, the airport is not requesting any new projects. And that would conclude the CIP report, and we can pass it over to Mr. Jewsbury to discuss the accomplishments.
Okay. Good afternoon, and thank you, Commissioners. Glad to be here. I have Vet Ailey with me, my deputy director. Oh, I'm sorry, she just recently got married. Last name is Chin. It's also her birthday today, so happy birthday. Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about, highlight some of the accomplishments the airport has seen over the past year. Certainly, we are very fortunate to see passenger traffic continue to grow. Year-to-date, we're up 11% for the past couple of months, just for the month of May, we were up 13% and as much as 16% in April. So we're looking to see continued growth and hopefully achieve the 2.5 million passenger mark at the end of the year. In order to keep up with this great growth, like was talked about, we're trying to get ahead of the game with the terminal expansion, be able to provide opportunities not only for Allegiant to grow, but also opportunities to bring in more airlines. One thing that isn't on here, what I do want to mention, just because it was submitted prior to this report, is Chair Scott was out at the airport for ribbon cutting. We have a new on-demand shuttle service called the Grupper that we've partnered with PSTA. It's been up and running for four months. It's been very successful, actually had just under 2,000 riders. So that on-demand service operates between the airport and Clearwater Beach and San Key. So, and that's direct service to the various hotels. So that has been a wonderful accomplishment.
Any feedback from other folks that have similar type services and, you know, complaints or anything like that for this new service being in place?
No, we've received a lot of positive impact or feedback. In fact, the, even in the cost structure for this, it's only $8 per person or $20 for a group of four. I think it goes to 30 for a group of six. So it's been very affordable, if you will. So the feedback that we received from PSTA and the drivers have been very positive. We've also worked with them to allow them to stage up to four vehicles at the airport.
I was just thinking about competitive services. Any complaints from about?
No, we have not, as far as like the rental car agencies or others. No.
Okay, thank you.
Some of the other accomplishments required by the FAA, we have to conduct airfield wildlife hazard assessment. That's underway and should be achieved, I believe, by the end of the year. We were also successful in obtaining AIG funding, an amount of $4.9 million. Again, more grant money to go towards the terminal building. With that continued passenger growth, we've seen the addition of services to Colorado Springs, which has been successful as well. In looking for opportunities for efficiencies in the terminal building, we implemented what's called a common use system. And that's whereby the various ticket counter positions, departure gate areas are populated with computer equipment, monitors, this provided by the airport. So it would allow any airline to use any of those positions by signing in. So again, certainly a gain in efficiencies there. Another grant that we were successfully awarded was $6 million from FDOT, again, to go towards the terminal project. And in closing, I would also like to recognize the employees out at the airport. We only have 65 employees right now, and the average staffing level for airports of similar size throughout the state is 87. So we are an operation that runs lean and mean. That also includes a 24/7 fire department, operations department, and now maintenance department. So they're given, they're all, so very proud of them. Okay, with that, Vet?
I'll be covering the work plan. Obviously, when we have these applications, someone has to interface with the FAA and fill out the application. So we were successful in submitting the application for 4.9 million in bill funding from FY '22. We should have another three years of BIL funding after this year. And I spoke with the FAA just last week. They said there are no issues with it. It's already going through the Department of Transportation in Washington, so we should see that before the end of the summer. And obviously, we'll be bringing that back to you for your approval. Next year, we will be having our next bid on our on-airport rental car concessionaires. It's very competitive. It's a lot of work. We've already started getting proposals together for our rental car consultant that's done a really good job of helping us through the process because it usually takes between six to eight months of back and forth meetings with the rental cars. And so we're starting that process early, and that contract expires at the end of September of 2026. And as soon as we collect the money that we have out there right now in application number eight, we'll be submitting a passenger facility charge application number nine to the FAA for additional terminal costs. So far, in PFC money, we have about $2.8 million in PFC money, but they don't traditionally award that until they see more evidence from us that we've gone through the schematic design process, that we've got the GMP, so that they can see what the project is actually going to cost. And we've also been working with the FAA, talking about eligibility, because PFC money can only be spent on areas that the FAA would typically pay for. So if there's items like the concessionaire space, they don't pay for anything like that. So they, we've been working on eligibility with the floor plan to determine how much will they allow for PFCs and FAA to be able to contribute towards the terminal footprint. That's all for that. Do you want to do performance measures, or do you want me to do them?
Questions? Just looking at your performance measures and the actuals, actuals, budget, budget, and of course, the first one that jumped out was our noise abatement procedures. On behalf of that noise abatement task force and former member and watchdog Lou Claudio, just maybe a thought that, you know, we're in the mid 90s, and now you're expecting it to be less. So what's the thought process behind that?
Well, it's all about continued relationships with the airline, meetings with the chief pilot. Anytime there's any non-compliance, that information is provided back to the airline to go ahead and research, determine why. It could be anything from weather, conflicting traffic. So we investigate that, and it's not as if it just falls on deaf ears. The airline takes that information, communicates it back. It's a need for continued communication throughout to let them know where things stand and make sure they have a seat at the table. So we have certainly kind of a long way in the compliance. My other deputy director, Mark Sprague, has done an excellent job in identifying new noise abatement procedures that we can go ahead and enhance and again, trying to limit the amount of aircraft or airlines flying over communities.
Yeah, Mark does a great job. Mark does a great job. I agree, and the task force is really, really good. In '23 and '24, was the budget still at the same 85% and we've just exceeded it? Or was it higher and now we're thinking we're not going to do as well?
No, it was trying to set a reasonable goal. Again, we're always striving for 100%, knowing that, you know, that's a hard drive. So our goal is 85, but we don't have any reason to think that we're not going to exceed that and stay within a 90 percentile.
You've already hit 90. Like, I'd like to see a budget of 95, for crying out loud. I'm kidding. But no, it just looked like you were already quite successful. And again, kudos to Mark and his team and the group, but when you have a budget that's coming in less than what you've already attained, I was just wondering if there was something that was causing that change, if that, if they could.
I just want to give a special kudo shout-out. I use, I come over to the airport a lot to pick up a rental car, and then I've only been once with the, supporting our veterans from the fly-in, so. But I was headed to Tallahassee on behalf of, or with the Florida Association of Counties, and it was during a holiday season time, and there were several flights coming in. And the lines for the rental cars was like wrapped around all the way down to that information kiosk, you know, from Budget Avis all the way down there. And one of the persons recognized who I was, and they offered me to skip, and I said, "No, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to wait in line." But I did reach out to, I was able to get the phone number for the Avis headquarters, and they immediately got down two additional counter people and two lot people to move individuals expeditiously. And some of them went out and took the, because I said, "Hey, there is this if you're going out to the beaches." So they went out, some took advantage of that, they didn't even know about it. But I just wanted to say that I really appreciate how every time I've gone to that airport, everybody there has just been so accommodating, whether they knew who I was or not. They have just been so accommodating, making sure that our guests, our visitors, get what they need. The offices that they have stationed there are really nice. I'm already scheduled to come back and do another tour visit since there've been some enhancements there next month. But I just wanted to say that publicly because sometimes individuals don't know. It's a delicate dance when you have a holiday. It was some kind of league baseball thing going on. So it was just a lot of traffic. It was a lot of traffic, and you all did a really good job moving people in, moving them out, getting their luggage in, redirecting them the whole nine yards. So it may be a small airport compared to the size of our friend across the water, but I really wanted to just say that I appreciate your service.
I appreciate your kind remarks.
And things that go on when I go down.
And yeah, we're very fortunate. We have good partnerships with all the tenants, the TSA in particular. It's amazing how many common, positive common cards we get as far as the way that the passengers are treated. And that's with all, God bless you. And that's throughout the airport with all our tenants, but thank you.
And I'll be sure to tell Mr. Castro that we have a new concessionaire for Avis Budget, and he came to visit with us a couple of months ago, and he was just starting out. And he was kind of afraid because they have such a very small amount of parking spaces there because the last bid enterprise did so well. And he's been really good to work with because we've been trying to find additional spaces for him. I mean, he's still paying for them and all, but he was kind of afraid at first, but I'll make sure to let him know that you gave him kudos because he's really been trying to put together an outstanding team in the meantime as well.
And I think your comment about a personalized approach is so true. And it couldn't be more evident than when you have the honor flight and you turn over your whole area down below to, you know, welcoming our veterans back. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to O'Neil Ducharme, who passed away recently. I think his funeral was just today, unfortunately, and tomorrow, graveside service. But he was, I mean, he's a veteran that did it, but he also was there always welcoming folks back, and he was just always a big smile on his face and-
Well, no pun intended, but we're honored to do it.
Yeah, no, it's just great, great stuff, so thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I had questions. Well, congratulations. I'm really excited to see all the activity at the airport. I read about your parking garage plan in the newspaper. I hadn't heard about that, so great. I did have a question about operating expenses and revenues for Harrison. Can you, can you tell me, Harrison? It is Harrison, right?
Yes.
Sorry about that. What are the projected operating revenues and operating costs for the airport? I don't get that. I get the, I get the budget. I don't know what the operating, what are the total operating, not counting capital expenditures, just-
So you're just looking for the page number for that revenue section?
What are the revenues going to be for the operating revenues?
Sure.
Not grants, not?
Sure, yeah. So if you go to page 12, it's going to be on pages 12 and 13. You'll be able to see, I can point you to the account lines.
You just a gross number would be fun with me.
Sure. So I may have to get back to you on an exact total, but yeah, it is available on here. So like the airline is, they're projecting 5 million this year. That's part due to the, that's account number 344101.
Yeah, no, I can see the line, I just didn't see it totally.
It's about 45 million.
45 million?
When you take out all of the grants and anything we get from the feds, yes.
Okay, so that's just pure operational revenues coming in? And what do our operating, I'm trying to figure out if we're turning a little profit on operations or not, and I haven't been able to do that, so.
Yes, we've been very fortunate in my 10 years here to at least have at least 4 to 5 million in a revenue situation over our expenses.
Positive for, over operating expenses?
That's why our beginning and ending fund balance is so wonderful.
And that was a strategic decision early on, knowing that we, well, we had to build up reserves, not just for rainy day fund, should something happen to the airlines that we have there, but also knowing that we were going to be moving forward down the road with the terminal expansion project and trying to build up those reserves to negate the need for any kind of type of loan or bond.
So on the reserves, would it be, if we're going from 169,000 in reserves from '91, would that be safe to say that's the difference between revenues and operating expenses? Or is it grants and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's all.
That's all, that's everything. The reserves, I also want to point out that reserves include any money that we have not spent yet. For instance, the Taxiway Delta project that we have waiting that we're about to bid out, that money is included in there. So I tell people not to get too excited when they see over $100 million in reserves because there's still a lot of money to come out of that.
Okay. Also, in that 45 million you were talking about in operating, would you, is that, would that include the four, over 4.2 million in real estate leases that we have on properties surrounding, like?
Yes.
We've got the airport business center and the auto auction people and the Cracker Barrel, they're all paying rent.
Yes.
So that would be in that 45 million?
Yes, that's all part of that.
So I would consider those non-operational airport. We've got a lot of real estate, it's got a lot of commercial leases, and I would consider that non-operational revenue for the airport itself. And I guess my idea, my thinking is, do you foresee in the future that the airport, well, the operations of the airport would be paying for themselves and maybe that some of the income that we receive on the properties that the airport owns could be used? Or, I don't know. You know, are we ever going to turn a profit at the airport?
Sure. Yeah, it's, you're correct. It's under FAA grant assurances, we have to utilize those revenues that are generated to help make the airport self-sufficient. When the airport sits on about 2,000 acres, and half of that is our industrial park, the Cracker Barrel, the Chick-fil-A, the jail. So that money is, helps us turn a profit, helps all airports turn a profit. That land before, when it was army-based and before the federal government turned it over to the county, they acquired a lot of that land surrounding the airport for the specific purpose of generating additional revenue. Can I sell it? It's a hard sell to the FAA. There'd have to be real justification. The last time we sold land, it was, wasn't a significant portion, but it was to the state, the Florida Department of Transportation, to provide land for the Gateway Express project.
So we can't sell it, and we can't turn a profit on it? Or we can't at least turn a profit and return it to the taxpayers? We got to keep it in the airport? We gotta keep it in the airport?
Correct, it has to stay at the airport, again, for, for the FAA.
All right. And then just as long as we're on it, real quick, what are, what are the plans for the golf course? It's a large chunk of?
Yeah.
What's that?
Sure, I can.
Never mind, if it's too much, he gets to ask all kinds of questions.
No, I can.
What are you pointing me for? I ask one question, and everybody freaks out on me. All right, I'll ask you later.
Sure, I can do it quick, you got it.
I know it's a flood zone, I know all that stuff.
Yeah, 130 acres, we can now develop maybe two-thirds of that because of flood zone issues. Now, we're looking at basically dividing that up, non-air nautical, not dependent on the airfield, if you will, and also air nautical. We've already completed environmental assessment required by the FAA, we have that behind us. We have the design pretty much completed for the construction of a taxiway because we, as it stands now, there's no connectivity from the airport golf course to the airfield. So that construction will be starting shortly. We do continue to work with economic development to find out what type of interest is out there. There's also a lot of infrastructure improvements that are gonna be necessary out there.
Okay, that's good enough.
Okay.
Well, and just say, say one final piece to that. So he's got the airport side, that's in progress. But the non-airport side, you needed a certain volume in order to support the infrastructure improvements that need to be made, you know, roads, water, sewer, all those things. And because so much of that became in an, what is it, attenuation zone or whatever it was?
Limbo.
Limbo, that was it. I mean, basically said they can't, they can't use a significant portion. So that limited the amount of area that we can develop, and because it's next to an airport, there's height limits, so you can only get so much development. So the question is, can that little development support the infrastructure that's needed to make it viable land? That's what economic development's working on.
Is the juice worth the squeeze? Hey Tom, I got a question. It says somewhere in here where there's some TSA security initiatives that are increasing expenses, requiring additional services from the sheriff's office. Can you talk about that a little bit? Is that additional deputies we need, or what's driving that?
Yes, that was a unfunded mandate that came down from the TSA that went into effect at the beginning of this fiscal year. It requires, it puts the burden on airports and not the TSA to do random screening of aviation workers, whether it's airport employees, tenants, other concessionaires. So in order to provide that level of coverage, we had to hire additional employees. We took a look about contracting that out with private firms, but at the end of the day, it was gonna be cheaper if we contracted through the sheriff's department to provide unsworn deputies to go ahead and do that. And then, at the end of this year, we're required to implement explosive trace detection systems, so that's included in this budget as well for those pieces of equipment.
Is that, is that on the baggage itself, or is that on individuals?
On individuals.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Tom.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, next, BD RS. Kevin, we were used to seeing you like really regularly there for a while. Next up, substantial damage reports.
So Belinda Amundson is joining me again at the table here, and we are on the penultimate one, so we have one more after this, and then we're done. Kevin McAndrew is flying solo at the table for the department, and I do want to call out Jody Savalli. She is back at his office, and she puts his budget together, and she does a great job, works with Belinda all the time. So Belinda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chris, and good afternoon, commissioners. Beginning at the top of page one, summarizing the department's budget. Building and Development Review Services is supported by three funds, the General Fund, the Building Services Fund, and the Construction Board Fund. The FY '26 overall budget, including reserves, is $23.1 million. Of that, the General Fund portion is $7.3 million. Turning to the top of page two, Building Services Fund is $14.7 million, and the Construction License Board Fund is $1.1 million. Turning to the top of page three, to efficiencies and cost-saving measures. The department has reduced costs over the last few years, and so cost savings and efficiencies this year has been a little bit limited. In FY '25, the department recognized a cost reduction of about $105,000, and the largest of these reductions is saving in contractual services by bringing those services in-house. In FY '24, the department reduced their budget by nearly $152,000, and this was also primarily due to a significant reduction in building services, third-party contractual services. Moving down to the middle of the page, to budget drivers. Excluding reserves, the department's total budget decreases $27,000. Revenues decrease overall by about 100, or, excuse me, $438,000, and much of this is from expected decreases in revenue from the Construction License Board Fund. Reserves decrease $426,000, and that's primarily in the Building Services Fund. Personnel decreases a minor amount by just under $1,000, and the department's FTE remains flat at 130 people, and as the middle of May, the department has had 12 vacancies. Operating expenses decrease $26,000, and most of that is the General Fund decreasing for non-recurring costs for the short-term rental program, which was budgeted in FY '25 and not needed in FY '26. Moving to decision packages, in the middle of page, I believe that's five. These expenses are currently included in the budget numbers that you see today. So the first decision package is for third-party consulting services. The department utilizes these services to cover staff vacancies and increase capacity for their third-party contractual services for building inspections, plan reviews, and permitting. The second decision package is for a rapid permitting pilot, which would allow the department to provide some enhanced services for their customers. And then toward the bottom of page four, we have a summary of the department's user fee changes. Development Review Services in particular is implementing the second of a three-year fee increase, and that initial process was for cost recovery, simplifying the fee structure, and aligning with ongoing changes. The FY '26 portion of these increases is expected to be an approximately $264,000 in revenue. The department does not have any CIP projects for FY '26. And now we move to the top of page five, where I'll hand it off to Kevin for accomplishments, work plan, and measures.
Thank you, Belinda. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Kevin McAndrew. Starting with highlighting accomplishments for FY '25, I want to acknowledge and thank staff for their sustained efforts over the past eight months supporting storm recovery. I want to thank administration, and I want to thank each of you on this board for your support and resources made available to BD RS that facilitated putting our best efforts forward since, since late last September of 2024. The, in the big picture, the entire duration of FY '25 has largely been dedicated to storm recovery, the entire duration, while we've managed to maintain a high level of our blue sky operations. And I want to emphasize that there's many lessons that have been learned through recovery. I know they're going to position us to do even a better job next time regardless of the scale of impact, but I also am confident that many of the lessons that we've learned will have applicability to our blue sky operations. And at my last update to the board on recovery, I did speak to lessons learned, and I want to briefly highlight one of those priority policy issues, and that is with regard to resources. In a coordinated, in a coordinated effort, we are currently moving forward with a county-wide RFP for Recovery Services to support building services and floodplain management services. All of these cities and towns within Pinellas County have been invited to participate in this RFP. Those that are confirming their interest will be identified in the RFP to be a participant. This, this RFP is being structured not as a piggyback type of contract, but one in which any participating community will enter into their own agreement with contractor or contractors, plural, such that they will manage their own agreements as well as the cost of those services. We've structured the scope of these services to be scalable so that they can fit depending on the degree of recovery. Everyone's needs will be different, so it will be set up in a menu format with all of the services ranging from building to floodplain to communications, and, and as well as code enforcement. And the intent again, though, is to, is to have this in place as aggressively as we can. Our target is early September. By the time we can get this out on the street, give adequate time to respond to this and bringing through a selection process, the idea here is that there'll be numerous contracts awarded so that the capacity is there to serve every, serve everyone in the county. And this is really a key, a key piece moving, moving forward. On a similar related area, one of the, one of the most critical pieces that challenged us significantly in recovery was that of the limitations of the FEMA estimator tool. You've heard me speak to that at numerous occasions, the burdens of 50-plus manual entries for every single inspection that had to take place. We're, we're moving forward also in a coordinated fashion and having ongoing conversations now with a national third-party vendor forerunner. They happen to already represent Clearwater as well as a couple of other municipalities. They performed well in this recovery. They would largely completely obviate and address the shortcomings of the FEMA estimator tool, so that's a work in progress, but it's one that's high on our list such that, again, we're not going to be reliant upon what was really a constraint for us in managing the substantial damage assessment process.
Commissioners, this substitution for the FEMA estimator tool needs to be approved by FEMA, so you can't just go out and build your own. But that's what they're working on, is building something that's FEMA compliant and FEMA-approved.
So my question to that is, if what the president is proposing, which is that FEMA no longer operates through the federal government, but is now handed down to the states, and it could look totally different, depending on whatever happens, would that still be the case? Or it depends on how it looks when it comes out?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we just don't know what's gonna happen at the federal government level, but we're preparing the best we can. And, you know, and this was key. Obviously, Kevin took the lead on this and was starting down that process. As I talked to other city managers, they were doing the same thing, and it's like bell went off, let's work together. The same way we're doing on the contract, let's work together, build one tool that'll support us all, and we'll work with FEMA to get approval on that tool.
And, and I mean, I support what you're trying to do. It makes it easier for our residents, but that was just a question.
I will also clarify, because this is something that, again, everyone points to just FEMA, that substantial damage, substantial improvement are part of the Florida Building Code. So regardless of the disposition of FEMA, we still would be obligated under compliance with the Florida Building Code to enforce substantial improvement and substantial damage. So it's, it's, it's here regardless of where FEMA, FEMA ends up in the near future. And without drilling down into the data that I've been providing to you on a, on a regular basis, I do want to emphasize again, staff's embracement of, of adaptive policies and processes such that during the five peak months of recovery, our staff doubled permit output from normal blue sky operations. So again, kudos to, to staff in being able to sustain that type of productivity, and that was while managing 4,600-plus homes and structures through the substantial damage assessment process. And I'd like to, you know, say that we're landing the plane on substantial damage assessment. We're making every effort to close out all final determinations. However, it's important to clarify to you that we are just initiating the final step of that process, which is the appeals process. We actually have a, a full slate of appeals cases that commence next week, and will be running for the, for the coming weeks. There is not a specific deadline to file on that, so that's gonna run at a minimum months, if not, you know, not just a couple of weeks. And it's also important to clarify that with the extension of compliance for those structures that are substantially damaged, move to June 1st of 2026, we're still gonna be active with, with a degree of recovery associated with Helene and Milton well into, well into FY '26. It's just the, the duration of these are not short, and, you know, we're just all, again, making every effort to compress that, but there are, again, extensions that we provided that will, are gonna take us into at a minimum next summer through this, through this exercise.
Kevin, whether it's mobile homes or homes, if people can live in their homes for the next year, it's as long as they're continuing the effort of going through the process, or is there?
That is exactly, that is exactly right. As long as there's an effort towards compliance, they can remain in their homes until June 1st. And part of that extension was, was predicated on not knowing exactly how the funds from CDBGDR would actually shake out, and how much of those will in fact be able to be earmarked for whether they're mobile home residents or, or single-family home residents.
Are you getting any sense on the mobile home, singularly owned mobile home parks, about what those owners are gonna be doing? I mean, any feel for that yet?
So we, we've, we've gone through now multiple community outreach meetings, and we start each of those meetings by reinforcing that the mobile home communities are an important housing stock and option within Pinellas County. Because there are, when I leave these meetings, there are, in many cases, yard signs, save our community. Where within some of the communities, there, there apparently is some degree of, of discussion about the disposition, but from, from the messaging that we've provided, these are important options for housing, and so we're gonna do whatever we can to provide resources to them if they are substantially damaged, and assist them towards a path forward.
Last question, any of the communities that we have started to provide funding for, for stormwater improvements that are in these areas? I probably didn't ask that correctly. There are, there are several mobile homes where we are talking about funding improvements to a mobile home park. Stormwater?
I think, I am only aware of the sewer, the sewer, the sewer, the sewer infrastructure.
Sewer.
The sewer infrastructure.
Excuse me.
Yes.
It tightens up the stormwater intrusion.
Understand, but are any of those in the, you said there's two in the areas that we're talking about, the substantially damaged areas?
The parks that we have been working with, to my knowledge, are not part of that program to date.
Okay, thank you.
So there were other accomplishments for BD RS outside of storm recovery. I'm gonna transition to that, and one that really was a key accomplishment for us was being able to... And one that really was a key accomplishment for us was being able to move forward and updated short-term rental ordinance, have that approved by this board in late March with a comprehensive program launch in April. I know you're familiar with it, the key piece of that being the mandatory registration or certificate of use. But immediately, starting in early April, staff sent out a little over 1,700 letters to the short-term rental owner-operators with unincorporated Pinellas County. Those letters were formatted such that there would be three batches or three groups. The first group needing to apply by the end of May, the second by June, the third by July. The first batch was approximately 500 that had to apply by the end of May. Approximately 60% or 300 have, in fact, applied and are moving forward through that certificate of use process. For those that did not, we've already sent out a warning letter providing a 20-day period to come in and initiate that process. If they do not, that does not occur, there will be a notice of violation letter that follows. So the pieces are in place. The technology investment that was supported and made is what enables us to have an accounting and to monitor the short-term rentals in the county. Again, thank you to this board. We have the additional staffing in code enforcement. We have a dedicated short-term rental administrator. We have three additional code officers that have been integrated into the full staff so that we now have a north mid-county and south-county presence. We have the extended hours on weekends, the 24/7 hotline. There's going to be some refinement communications being great in supporting the program, but we're off and running on this and, you know, look forward to providing an update on this. We had, as you know, one of our commitments has been providing a land development code update every year, separate and apart from the short-term rental. We had two other land development code updates last year. One was in response to the storm impact, where we had a definition update to substantial improvement, providing flexibility that also resulted in a local technical amendment to the Florida Building Code. And we also had an update regarding the compatibility of multifamily development scale, density, and height, specifically with the nexus to the Live Local Act. I will say that the whole issue of substantial improvement and cumulative look-back period, the disposition of Senate Bill 180, if that is signed without any line item vetoes, it will nullify the cumulative look-back period. So that is embedded in that bill that has yet to hit the governor's desk.
How do you think that might affect some of the appeals that are going to be going on?
This is, again, something that is often misunderstood, that the cumulative look-back has no relevance to substantial damage. It is strictly related to substantial improvement. So that's something, though. But again, we put in the flexibility that largely really provided the response that was needed, where repairs specific to storm repair would not have to take into account other improvements that had been made within the prior 12 months. So it wasn't effective amendment. So whether this goes through as it is, the county put in place really a flexible and effective amendment to that provision. Last summer, Building Services deployed a really great technology platform, Selectron Atlas, that brings efficiencies to our inspections, scheduling, also a huge convenience to the contractor and homeowners that would typically be not knowing when their inspection was going to take place. And we were bombarded with hundreds of calls a day. We're on an automated fashion now. Every morning at 7:30, anyone that's scheduled for that inspection gets their two-hour window. There's also a tracking device that allows a contractor or homeowner to see where that inspection is in the queue for the day. Because there are times where an inspection may take longer or has to be resequenced for concrete pore or some other reason, and they can track that over the course of the day. So it's really an enhancement. On the internal side to us, the efficiencies here benefit our inspection desk help and also, in combination with what I'm going to address here momentarily, view specs, virtual inspections, will gain additional capacity within our inspection team. Contractor licensing has made a number of business process improvements over the past year to realize cost savings. I do want to recognize Michelle Krikovich for all of her contributions that have spanned significant technology updates, operational efficiencies, and customer service enhancements within contractor licensing. Michelle has announced her retirement from the county. That'll be effective in December. Concurrent with this announcement, contractor licensing is now being fully integrated within Building Services, starting next week. The purpose of that is to leverage the synergies that occur between building enforcement and contracting licensing. We're looking to optimize revenues with those synergies and to realize further cost reductions. Shifting over to work plan initiatives, all in all, almost all of our work plan initiatives were paused, other than short-term rentals late last September. We're going to pick up some really important work plan initiatives, starting with the first one that I'll characterize as a building performance scorecard. And this is bringing transparency to our effectiveness in reviewing and issuing building permits. And by fall, we will have a public-facing dashboard that is going to provide live-rolling data on the duration of building permit review, how many review cycles it takes for a residential permit, for a non-residential permit. This is really important from a transparency standpoint. Behind this, on an internal side, we'll have much more granular data that will point out any stress points where we need to make refinements to drive those numbers down. We've set key performance indicators for both residential and commercial that are far below the state statutory requirements. By way of example, 30 days is the statutory requirement for a residential. We have a KPI of 14 days. Our goal is to drive that number further down. But as important as the first number, and this is similar to site plans, I like to say, predictability and certainty are the driving considerations here, but the number of review cycles is equally important. If it takes you seven days but you're regurgitating something five times, you really haven't accomplished something. So we want to be transparent on the number of review cycles as well as each review. So that's going to be coming. Really excited about that. We were close last September to launching that, but that will be in place for this fall. I had just alluded to virtual inspections. We had initially deployed this in late 2024. We're going to aggressively expand that, both within building and within development review services. We started to engage the contractor community last summer. We're going to pick that up again to get their buy-in. But we're going to focus on high-volume permits, windows, doors, garage doors, roofing, to really leverage virtual inspections where it's going to be a huge convenience to the contractor community. It's also going to benefit us with gain in our capacity on the inspection side. So that's a real important one. Artificial intelligence. I know we're going to pilot it in FY26. I'm probably repeating myself, but there's just so much fluidity in this marketplace right now that I would not want to commit other than piloting. I really think over the next year or so, we're going to see a consolidation of a number of these startups that are going to have a much bigger footprint in the marketplace. And at that point, we'll be prepared, I think, to really embrace it. We're going to pilot it, though. It is expanding now to Florida Building Code, Plan Review Compliance, as well as Site Plans. So we'll venture into both of those. We're also going to keep a close eye on auto-generated AI. We have a call center, three full-time staff, also supported by staff within our customer service group. The chatbots, so many now, corporations are using these to support or, in some cases, reduce staffing that can provide these services. So we're going to keep an eye on that, again, to see if there's the ability to possibly integrate that, too. And lastly, on work plan initiatives, we will have some key land development code updates moving forward. We will be before you at the end of July, the July 31 work session, on an update to our tree ordinance as well as our noise ordinance. You'll recall, the noise ordinance was a big focus at the time we moved the short-term rental ordinance through. But both of those, I know, are very much a priority here, and we'll be bringing that to you next month. When it comes to performance measures, I'm going to briefly just touch upon what I think is an important discussion, and that's tracking revenues. I know there were prior budget information sessions about any indicators on the housing market, what's happening. I do think that building here in Pinellas County is a little bit different than in many places in that we're not largely unincorporated, based on new construction. You know, we're largely remodels, largely residential, remodel, rehabilitations. And our permit count is right on track. Our revenues, exclusive of storm recovery, which were waived anyway, so our revenues in building are actually about 20% ahead at this point in the year. So it's actually an encouraging sign that we have that kind of activity within building. But I would not want to necessarily tie that with new housing starts because it's just, again, unincorporated is just very different than some of the other areas here where there's these huge multifamily developments and subdivisions that we just don't have.
And that's, so we're 20% ahead? That's even with waiving storm?
Yeah.
Wow. No kidding.
Yeah.
If he's done, I want to get something at the very end.
The last piece I just want to address under performance measures is that dashboard, public-facing dashboard I alluded to, is really going to be driven by a technology, that BTS called Power BI. It's business intelligence is the translation of BI, but it's, this is going to really give us the opportunity to have data be much more meaningful for our operations and also to benefit the public. Because this technology takes really complex data, and it transforms it visually as well as analytically into much simpler interpretation. So we have that now in place from BTS. And again, we're going to be looking to utilize that heavily going through FY26. And I just want to finalize my update by saying that this past year has been an experience for myself, as well as everyone in BTS, and for many of us in the departments here, that none of us have ever been through before, to the degree of impact to our residents, to our businesses, to our contractors. And I do believe, coming out of this, that we will be in a better place, not only for the next recovery, when that ever does occur, but also to apply that to our operations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
So, yeah, I believe that's true, and I think you guys have done a great job having to pivot as often as you had to pivot. I think you did a really great job, your whole team. So I had sent something to Barry, and I didn't put a decision package in, but it's something I want to tell you about because I think if you think this is of value, and I don't think you've had time to look into it. So that said, I had met with a gentleman about the IAS accreditation. So just like the community rating system, our community rating system in unincorporated is so good that we get to give our residents a 40% discount on flood insurance. Well, there is another rating system, the BCEGS rating system, that if we score well and if our building department was accredited with the IAS accreditation, that could get our BCEGS scores aligned where we could get a huge discount in homeowners' insurance and for wind damage, the same way we do for the CRS ratings. And so, and I can, I sent a lot to Barry. I don't know if I sent everything to Barry. I have a ton of information on it.
Tom has it all.
Tom has it all.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a lot of information on it, and, you know, we keep saying we want to put the people first, and if there's something we can do, and I believe with the changes you've already made to your department, that getting accredited probably wouldn't be that difficult because it's permitting, plan review, inspection, property maintenance code enforcement, and construction code maintenance. And a lot of this, you've already revamped and redone. So my guess is, I don't think it would be that hard to get accredited. The cost is based on population, so I don't know the number. It's anywhere from 5,500 to 14,000. But, so would be the population of unincorporated, of course. So I don't have a cost on the price. But if there is a way that this is a doable thing, and we could do with that rating what we've done with the CRS rating, I think would be a huge benefit to the residents in Pinellas County. And I believe all of our insurance is going to go sky-high now. And if we can do something in our building code to get accredited, that would help them. If we could get a 40% reduction on homeowners' insurance, just like we do for flood insurance, I think that would be amazing. And so, like I said, I didn't officially put in a decision package, but I think if this is something that you feel we could do, and we can give that kind of benefit to our residents, I think it's something we should consider. But I'm going to leave that at your discretion and for you to get back at me. But I really, I don't think it's that much money. I don't know how much time would be required. So look into it. But I think if we could give a benefit to our citizens on insurance, that goes a long way. Just a thought.
We're researching it, Commissioner, and we'll bring it back after we've had a chance to...
Okay. I just wanted to...
Kind of tied up in these meetings this week.
Yeah, I know that. I knew that. But I wanted the commissioner to know...
We will bring it back to you.
Yeah, I just wanted the commissioner to know about it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give me an example of, first of all, I really like the idea of the on-the-spot building permit, because anything that shortens the time, I think, is a wonderful idea. So thank you for that. And I like bundling of permits. I've kind of mentioned that before, where things could be kind of rolled into one so that you're not having to go get a permit for plumbing, and then maybe a permit for electrical and, you know, all of that. But can you give me an example of a on-the-spot building permit for non-structural interior renovation?
Sure. You know, I firstly want to clarify that I don't know that it's recognized or that we do a good enough job in... that we do a good enough job in the volume of permitting, close to 28,000 permits a year. Approximately 70% of those are what we call express permits. They're issued the same day. And I know that as part of the strategic plan, rapid permitting was a priority. It's important to emphasize that the greatest percentage of our permits are issued the same day. This is going to, what's proposed in this decision package, is taking that one step further. And non-structural, so many of the storm repair permits would fall into that. Someone's coming in and doing a remodel project. They're not moving walls, but they are redoing wall coverings, they are doing flooring, and they're doing, they're making changes, again, that are not physically altering that baseline of structure. But those permits that have multiple trades in them would typically are not able to go through an express permit. The express permits are sort of siloed by trade. So exactly to your point, where you have a permit that has multiple trades in it, but it's non-structural, we've issued over 1,000 on-the-spot permits during storm recovery of that scope. So the concept is, we've done it in storm recovery. We think this could be a huge benefit that we could also offer during Blue Sky operations. And so we're asking, the staffing that we're asking for would not specifically be involved with that, but it would allow us to plug them into existing operations, where we can take the staff that are experienced and knowledgeable, that we could pilot this. The other one on the bundled permits, this came up over a year ago, where the marine contractors came in and spoke with us and told us that, you know, prior to BD RS going all digital and electronic, we used to walk in, we'd spend the day in your office, but we'd walk in with 10 applications for 10 different properties. But when that day was over, we walked out with 10 permits. Today, we go through a seller, but one maybe takes two weeks, one takes 28 days, one takes 12 days. And they're asking, you know, if you could accommodate this in a bundled fashion in some manner, it gives them much more reliability on buying materials, on scheduling staffing, and would be of a great advantage to them. So it's really those two areas, those would be two examples as to where we want to try to pilot this type of program.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, a couple comments. We talked Blue Sky storm recovery. And I just, again, I wanted to commend your team, your leadership, your team, with the organizational changes, the adaptability during the storm season. And even during the Blue Sky stuff, we've looked at stormwater requirements at residential homes. We've looked at sidewalk issues and limiting the, putting a cap on the bank there. We're going to look at tree ordinance, and just keeping an open mind to bringing discussion here, so that at the end of the day, we're doing what's best for our residents. And I can't commend you enough for that. The permitting improvements that you've talked about, the shorter timeframes that you were working on before, we had the storm issues, and the, limiting the number of times you come back. That's so frustrating to come in and get comments. You go back and make the changes, and you come in and you get new comments. And so you're not minimizing the timeframe, the number of trips that somebody has to come in. So all of that's great stuff. And, you know, I've talked about Kathy Perkins, Jim Fogarty, Kelly Levy, and on and on with our directors. And, you know, Kevin, I'm extremely proud to have you as our leader. When I talk to business owners, you know, there's still frustration from time to time on the permitting side, but they really see changes happening. And culture changes take time. And I just really wanted to tip my hat to your organization for the storm recovery period, but also the Blue Sky stuff that you continue to work on in parallel. So not easy stuff. And I get, my mind just scrambles, thinking about all the stuff that we've been through, that you've been through, and your department's been through this last seven or eight months. So thank you. That's all I had.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, Kevin, I want to echo pretty much everything that Commissioner Eggers just said. And I'm just very appreciative of all the hard work that you and Tom and your staff did in this whole storm recovery effort. Knock on wood, we don't ever have to do anything like that again. But just the fact you always made yourself available, and your staff available, to respond to issues as they came up, just very much appreciate that, and the residents appreciate it. And just listening to all the things that you're doing to modernize that department is just very, very encouraging. So appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Be happy to share it with the staff.
Please do.
All right. So, wow. Wow, there's only Board of, Board of County Commissioners, who are those guys, right?
All right. So we'll go with the no-huddle offense, then. I'm your budget analyst on this one, and I have been. That's not something new. So I don't reward any of my staff with that assignment. I keep it all to myself. So with that said, you can see your, all your information on page one. We'll jump right to the top of page two, the budget drivers. Overall, your budget is looking like it's going up just under $50,000. And a lot of that is due to salaries, and a lot of it driven by state requirements on salaries for commissioners, and some movement that we did right at the end of last year, that we didn't get all the way into the budget. So we had amended that, and so now it's kind of showing up as a difference in the two years. As well, each budget, the way we've put it together, each district budget is staying at the 11,400, with the exception of District 7. District 7 continues into fiscal year '26 with the additional $3,500. So I suppose that is a policy question, but we just continued it going forward in your office for the Florida Association of Counties travel. As well, computers are going down a little bit, and that's kind of offsetting the increase that's up there. I'll jump to decision packages. I received three decision packages. One was Commissioner Scott asking us to keep the taxes as low as possible. And the other two were from Commissioner Nowicki, associated with a county hospital resiliency grant program, and another one associated with a celebration of the 250th anniversary of the United States, flagpoles, and associated work around that. So no capital improvements, the accomplishments are in the accomplishments book, and everything else is pretty straightforward. So I can answer any questions you have.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. Chair Scott, you sent us an email, kind of looking at how you were desiring to switch up the, some of the funds that go into the chair's office. So I think it was like 22,000 and something minus, it was 1,000 you wanted to keep in the chair's office.
Right.
And then the 22,000, were you saying to split that up amongst the seven offices?
Yes.
On top of what their office budget is? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then the other thing I want to say is, because we are all trying to look at cost savings, I would not be disappointed or upset if the decision was made not to provide me with the additional travel for the Florida Association of Counties, since everybody's doing their part, you know. So just wanted to share that.
Do you have enough in your budget to absorb whatever travel may be? I mean, it's...
I will be doing more travel now, since I'm the president-elect. But again, I just, you know, we want to be team players. So we just have to figure it out. But, yeah, I would be doing more traveling because of that.
And when do you, when does that occur?
June of, well, this June, this month. Ooh, this month. I become president-elect, June 25. And then next year, June, I'll be president. Yes, sir.
Well, before I was going to bring up my question, I just wanted to say that I support Commissioner Flowers having the extra travel because of those FAC responsibilities. Having a president from Pinellas County in FAC, I think, is important for Pinellas County. And there's no question that she will have other responsibilities outside of Pinellas County. Because of that, and just the prestige and the notoriety that it brings to Pinellas, having her in that position, I think warrants the small stipend that she will, the 35, it's $3,500. I think that we can certainly absorb that. And so I'd be supportive of keeping that the way that it is. But my question, and I think having it this year and next year, when she's president, and then after that, we can get rid of it. But I think the next two years, it's certainly justifiable. My question for you, Chris, is I know that our salaries are determined by the legislature. And there's random times throughout the year that we get raises because of the, with what the legislature does. And there's not, like, I don't believe there's like a specific time period, or like time of year that that happens. We just get emails from Ken Burke saying, you know, on such and such date, you know, your salary is this amount. Is there something that we can do, and, I mean, it's, would not have a very big budgetary impact, but because we have discussed whether or not county employees get raises, is there something that we can do that would, like a policy that we can make that says, you know, for the next fiscal year, we will not be accepting any raises that the legislature gives us? Because they give us raises, and then we use county funds to pay those.
I will tell you, this question arose at one point in the distant past. I want to say maybe even Susan was the county attorney then. We can go back and take a look at it, because this has certainly been quite some time ago. But I know that the conclusion that was reached then was that we here in Pinellas County could not alter the rate of pay that the state establishes for the seven of you. However, what they came up with back at that time was for each of the seven commissioners to pay back to the county the delta. I can't recall what actually happened. I don't know if they actually went through with doing that or not. I recall that there were some that balked.
But we can't, like, we couldn't direct Chris or the...
We would need to look at it. Again, Chris, Commissioner, I know that, you know, back then, that was the conclusion that was reached. But we can look and see if there's been any change, and bring back an answer. But we would need to look at that and see what our authority is.
Commissioner, also, we're not through the budget process yet, so let's see if we're able to provide raises and stuff, which, you know, I still think we can. We need to stay competitive. So I wouldn't want you to get ahead and, you know, make, you know, target your own salaries, which is...
No, I mean, it's, but it's just seven of us, and we make very good salaries, especially compared to most county employees. I mean, we don't make Barry Burton money, but we, you know...
Let's not go there.
Compared to regular salaries.
Wow, I can see how this is going to turn. But we're going to, you got time coming up here in August, you know, where you're going to talk about your budget. By then, you'll have a recommended budget, and so maybe a more appropriate time to discuss that, based upon what we see.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to be able to find a way to give some raises to employees, so.
We need to give raises to the employees. I mean, we do, we stay competitive.
Your point, I think it, there was something done when the downturn in the economy happened, and I wasn't around at that point. But I did hear about, kind of indirectly, that there was either a cap or a reduction. But it was kind of self-imposed, I mean, the state does what they do.
Right.
And then we, you know, can, but again, the technicality behind it, I don't really know. But I think, you know, and I mentioned it at the very beginning, that that's something that, you know, we're talking about our employees, and we should do lockstep. I mean, our, you know, all of our folks are doing the same thing. So I think it's a great idea to look into.
Mr. Sherratt?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Flowers for representing us on the Florida Association, and I...
She will do a great job.
What's that?
She will do, she will do a fabulous job.
Fabulous job. I know, I've been to one with her, and yeah, she's fabulous at that. So, and then I would like to reiterate what my esteemed colleague here had to say about you need to keep that. I don't think you should be paying yourself, using your own funds to get to represent us there.
If you don't need it, you don't need it.
So I'm going to reiterate the same thing. And if she doesn't use it, then she doesn't use it. But I think you should, I think it should be in there for you, because you shouldn't have to take on that burden. And, you know, you're going to have to put the miles on your car to begin with. And that, that in itself is, you know, a lot. So...
So thumbs up on that.
And the more we go to Tallahassee, the less we have to... So far, I have not been thrown out of rooms, but they accept my appointments.
And I also support the memo that Brian sent out about the individual budgets. I like the individual accountabilities in the offices, and I wasn't successful at getting that last year, but hopefully you'll be successful getting it this year. I think we can all be accountable to what we, what we're spending. And that way, every office knows exactly, you know, I can track exactly how I'm spending, if I'm being due diligent, if I'm not being due diligent. And I just think it's the way it should be. And so, that's my thought.
And it's easier for Chris to keep track of.
Great question. So it's just, we're just, we're redistributing the funds, we're not really changing the operation of the floor. Am I, is that what I'm understanding? Or are we changing the operation of the floor as well?
Well, the shared printer would go away, and we would order our own office supplies.
So the shared, the big printer down in the, so we each have to order a new one?
Well, one we needed, yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
We all have our own printers anyways.
We're still talking about having representation at the front.
Yes.
Okay.
And I do have a, kind of a analysis of that, of that position, if we want to talk about that, as far as utilization. It's, at present, you know, there's about 40% of the time of that position that is unencumbered. So, you know, it's just something we can talk about in the future. If there's, you know, a technological solution in the future we want to look at, we can talk about that.
And I think in the context of a new facility, and a new location, and how that's going to lay out, and how the security to the building will be, and then how the access to our offices will be, will be important to look at as well.
Yeah, because I mean, it doesn't get a ton of calls. We don't get a ton of walk-in traffic. We do get some, but, you know, it's, but anyways, or, you know, subject matter for another day. So is everybody kind of in agreement, then, that we change the shared budget to do that? Okay, all good? Okay, all right. And then, do we want to talk about decision packages at all, or what do we? I kind of had a thought, I ran by Barry yesterday. I don't know if this is even allowable with, in terms of, is it not?
You can't align to that.
Okay, all right. So I had a thought with, as far as the fireworks and stuff. I don't, I'm not supportive of using general fund on this stuff, just because it's just a very, very tight budget year. But with Rainier Park coming online next year, and it being the 250th anniversary of the United States as well, if there was an opportunity to do a fireworks display at Rainier Park and use some CRA dollars to fund that, I thought that was an interesting concept. But I don't know if it's an allowable expense within CRA, and I don't even know if that area, if it's too close to...
I don't think we can.
Yeah. I don't even know if you can do it there.
Our attorney that works with CRA has been on vacation this week, so we'll get you an answer next week.
Okay.
So I have a thought about the 250th Independence Celebration thing. And I'm in agreement with you on the fireworks part of it. That's traditionally a city function, whether it's St. Pete or Clearwater. I do... I do like the flagpole idea, and my thought on that is you have a proposal using TDC dollars for parks. And maybe we can use some TDC dollars to put up the two flagpoles, or the two flags at those two parks using TDC dollars. And then I started thinking about doing a 250th Independence Celebration. And we have very bright folks that work for Brian Loewak. And maybe if they put their heads together and wanted to do something as part of 727 Day next year, you know, and using TDC dollars for that. You know, I'm not supportive of using general fund dollars. But I do think maybe we can use with the, expanding the TDC definition and parks, using that for the big flagpoles. I'd be supportive of that.
Hate to be the bearer of bad news.
I'll ask Amanda to take a look at it, but again, let me say, I always start with the answer is no, unless it is specifically allowed under the statute.
The statutes are really tight.
I thought we could use it for parks.
It's not wide open for parks. It's very limited.
It's very narrow in how you can do that and what you can use it for. Believe me, we want to, we want to get a lot of stuff off the penny and push it to TDC, and you can't. But you can do some.
They probably do.
Oh, they have fireworks there all the time.
Yeah, they have them.
Yeah. They have a really big patriotic thing there. That could be an idea, especially if they have a proposal coming up sometime.
All right, well, Commissioner Nowicki.
Yeah, since, you know, it was brought up, you know, it was my package. Obviously, we can't, you know, talk amongst ourselves outside of meetings, so this is kind of the only way to, you know, get the discussion going. You know, I just, you know, brought forward this initiative. You know, a lot of it is like overdue infrastructure upgrades in our parks. Some of the flagpoles, I mean, are 40 years old. So, I mean, that's before Hurricane Andrew, and you have wind loads and wind variances. And so in some of the parks, like San Key, where the flagpole is 42 years old, isn't even up to building code. So, you know, maybe, it doesn't happen this year, but maybe this starts the conversation of, and our Parks Director said yesterday that there's been no budgeting for that time for replacement cycles. So, you know, I think when you have flagpoles that are 40 years old, rusting, you know, it's just something that we can unite together on.
Become a missile.
Your words. But sure. So I just think it was, you know, worthy discussion, and, you know, I respect the collective wisdom of this body. So yeah, you know, my goal is to make sure every idea, big or small, gets a fair hearing. And, you know, I appreciate everyone's thoughts on it, and it's important to look at. Thank you.
Just remember, things come in threes, and there's a third park in a certain part of North County.
Yeah.
I'm open to including that, Commissioner, so.
The only other, the only other issue, Commissioner Nowicki, is you brought up the issue of the, of Johns Hopkins. And since you put that out, they did apply through the, what is it, HMGP program? And that's us, along with all 24 cities. There's a, there's an evaluation team. They did apply through that grant program, along with other hospitals. And that, those applications will be evaluated, I believe, on July the 9th. They're coming up, and that team evaluates. We're one vote out of 25, so. It could be. They could be through their grant program, through their DR program. And so there's a couple of different avenues. I'm sure they're going after all of them.
So would, I'm wondering if, down the road, if any of the CDBGDR funds would be available for any of that kind of upgrades, whether it's on the not-for-profit side of that equation or...
We do have, we do have programs in there. Now, again, we've carved out St. Petersburg because they got their own.
Right.
And All Children's is in St. Pete. But again, it's your program. Those recommendations, when we stand up these grant programs, people can apply. Ultimately, it's going to be your decision.
Right. And what about the $400 million of resiliency funds that we haven't really even talked about yet?
That's what I was talking about. That's the HMGP program. It's now down to 220 million or...
Well, that didn't take long.
Yeah, they keep going after it. I talked to Kevin Guntry. You know, they wanted us to transfer some of that money back for the Elevate Florida Program. I said, how can I come to this body and do that? He was going to go back and check because we said we'd rather talk about that on the DR side, because we stand up a program, the people that are income-eligible on the DR side, because they're on his list also, and maybe we take that. That leaves free up. But we wanted to make sure that by working with them, we get more people, you know? And so he was going to look at that. He also gave us, our staff, some ideas on making sure those municipalities get all of the application things in. We think we could bump that number up higher, over 300 million, but that's a work in progress. Those applications, again, it's an ongoing program. And so the county is one vote of 25, each of the 24 cities and us. And so they apply through that grant program. You'll be approving the ones that are county-sponsored projects. And so the projects that are in St. Petersburg goes to their city council. Projects in Gulfport goes to their city council. It's kind of a convoluted way, because I can show you the whole list, but that's the way the program is established.
Have you changed who's doing the, who's representing us on that?
We haven't. We've just elevated our review.
Okay.
Just to, you know, address some of the conversation around the hospital grant. I mean, I've attended some of the CDBDGR down in St. Pete, and there's no commitment for hospitals or nonprofits, nonprofit hospitals, or Johns Hopkins from St. Pete's plan that they've submitted. I've attended... Yeah.
So I wasn't saying with the DR funds, just general conversation.
Yeah, and then I think, I mean, I mean, we've seen in, you know, with the recent hurricanes, I mean, made it clear that our hospitals, I mean, are essential to our community's resiliency. You know, we've talked about, you know, the last few days that, you know, there's still a lot of sausage-making left. There's still, you know, a lot of things to figure out. So I mean, I really would like to, you know, and this isn't, this isn't just writing a blank check. I mean, this is, you know, clearly stipulated that it's for hospitals that are investing $20 million from the last two storms and to harden their hospitals specifically. Because the return on investment, that if we have to shut down a hospital during a hurricane or worse, a total failure of a hospital service during an emergency, I mean, that's going to cost way more than a flood barrier. And so, you know, I really think we need to look at, you know, protecting our county's most vulnerable children in times of a natural disaster. And it almost acts as a shelter because it remains open during hurricanes and people that are on this, you know, life-saving treatment. You know, so I really think we got to look at it from multiple different factors. And, you know, there's still a lot of time, you know, left to go with our budget. So I'd really like to see, you know, the whole thing, you know? But if, you know, we want to be, I understand the value of the dollar this year. So I really think it's important to, you know, really, really look at that and see where we go in the coming weeks and few months, to see if we can keep a part of that in here and if we can use other funds, then we just substitute, you know, it's a placeholder for the general fund, but, and then substitute funds if they come up. So that's just my thoughts.
When we started down this grant program, this was exactly what's my concern, is that we're going to get individuals picked off. They're all good projects. What we don't see on the back end is something's coming off the back end. Okay? So we're not going to support a rebuild of a house. We're not going to support, something isn't going to get funded. And so they should go through the competitive nature of those grant programs. We certainly cannot start using penny funds, which is already overspent, for individual private businesses. That would be precedent-setting, that I think would be catastrophic. And, you know, and we, and they're not the only hospital. We also have Advent that have also applied, okay? And so, you know, there's others out there, and there are programs out there that, I think they need to compete with.
Well, Largo would be able to apply in this program. So, you know, I think with that, and we have set a precedent, I mean, since 2022, I mean, we have given $21 million in aid to private organizations. So I mean, there is a slight precedent, you know, for doing something like this, so.
Excuse me, Commissioner, your microphone.
Through our DR program, we're going to have different buckets of where people can apply and compete competitively.
Yeah, I was just thinking out loud about, it's not called Bayfront anymore, it's called whatever they are now. Their name changes. But anyway, you know, they have their own separate foundation where some of those dollars could be, I don't know if Johns Hopkins has their foundation, you know?
They do. They raise money.
Okay. So, and I was just, I'm just thinking out loud.
Well, and if you, to Commissioner's point, if you think about the alternative, which is, and again, I know it's all about choices and limited funds, so that's what we'll have to decide and grapple with. But if you think about the story of loading people up and moving them out of our county to another place, could be as far south as Miami. I mean, there was talks at the VA of doing that very thing because of not having places to go or places to put. So I think making those little islands resilient as we can, I mean, again, to the extent that we can, I think it's, I think it bears discussion, for sure.
You can, when we have the DR program, we've targeted it for all areas except St. Pete. It is your choice to include those areas into those, into those programs. So you can do that, you know, through that program. It's just that St. Pete is prioritized differently, so the question is, do you want to overlap that? But it's absolutely within your purview through that to make a program. We have programs for different types of categories that these could fit in. We just arbitrarily set outside of St. Pete because they have their own. But that's your, that's your choice.
All right, further discussion? All right, well, it's been a long couple of days. Appreciate all the, four days. Appreciate all the good discussion. And I know that our heart was all, were all broken when Della sent that email out canceling next Friday's budget session because we won't need it.
Now, only Friday, though. So here's kind of the lay of the land. So I'm meeting with, you got one left, and that's a sheriff, okay? Sheriff wants to meet with me. We're going to meet on Monday. We're going to see how that goes and see where we're at. We can either plug him in Tuesday or Wednesday and...
I won't be here Tuesday, so I'd rather do...
Okay, well, Wednesday, we, you know, we could, we could have our meeting on Wednesday, have only one agenda item on if we're ready. I'll let you know following that meeting whether or not we're successful in, you know, getting to a point where he's comfortable presenting to you. And, yeah, and that's the last one, so.
All right, well, have a good weekend, everybody.
Have a good weekend, everybody. And Dave, I appreciate you sitting in for me on Tuesday.
I'll do my best.
All right, I know, it's going to be sketchy.
Especially that one over there.
And I'll, have a good week, I'll see y'all Wednesday.
You'll behave.
All right.